Everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
I would like to welcome you all to the City of Dania Beach. Wait, just a second. City of Dania Beach, City Commission Strategic Planning Session. Today is January 9th, 2021, and it is 10:13 a.m. Call the roll, please.
Mayor James.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Davis. I see you. You're muted. Commissioner. Commissioner Davis.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Oddman.
Yes, here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Ansborough.
Here.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Lyle and the City Manager and staff for bringing us together for this strategic session, and I have no idea what we're doing, so I'm going to hand it all over to Lyle.
Do you have any comments before we start?
No, I just wanted to thank the City Commission, the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all the Commissioners for taking this very important step in the direction of working through our strategic planning session and adopting a document that will be our roadmap to the future. Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Lyle.
How are you all this morning? Something I'm saying for the first time in person. Some we've met on Zoom. This is very weird for me today, I must admit. This is the first time since February that I've done an in-person. All of mine have been virtual, and so this is, it gets a combination, so I have to adjust. So bear with me as I get back into practice from Zoom to in-person. This is a workshop, and the intent here is to be as informal as possible. I go by Lyle. I hope we keep that as informal. If my head gets cold, I will put my hat on. I had to dig for a sweater like some of you this morning. What can I wear today? Because it was going to get cool out and not warm up. This year has been a crazy year. The last three weeks have been particularly crazy. I was on the phone with Sugar Land, Texas, and they went to a red alert where they are totally closed down. They're a suburb of Houston. And we were, they were going to try to do a live, but now it's going to have to be virtual. They went to an extreme red alert. Port Pierce, who I'm going to be working with by Zoom this week, has one with COVID, a spout with COVID, two over 70, and one that had COVID. So it is out there, and so today is a day that hopefully we get a start. I do not think we will get done today. I told that to Anna. We've got a lot to cover. I thank you for your interview time. That was extremely helpful. The staff, I met with them virtually and had a very productive session. The doc, don't be overwhelmed by this thing, the book in front of you. It's part reference, part working. It will change as we go through today. What's in here, don't hesitate to change things as we go through it. For me, strategic planning is like driving the city to the future. Today, we're going to go out 15 years. You say, God, that's so far in the future. That's 2036. Some of us start to think about how old we are or whether we'll even be around at that time. That's not that far off. If you look back to it, go the other way. That's like 2006 behind us. So decisions you make, the non-decisions, the re-decisions, all are building blocks for Dania Beach's future. So the things we talk about today, we're going to start by saying, what's our destination? And that will be a set of value-based, don't make it like other cities. Make it that is unique to your city. And the other part of it is, some folks will say, oh, I'm not sure I like it. Others will say, I love it. That's why I live here. That's what we need to focus on. Things that distinguish you going forward. If we've got a destination, we then need a map, a five-year. What are the outcomes we want to achieve in five years? So as you see the plan today, and if you looked at it before, it's got outcome-based objectives for five years. These are, we're not going to have a long list. We're going to try to get it to five, maybe six outcomes. Then we'll look at the challenges that come from you and the staff, and then specific deliverable actions for the next year. So that next-year agenda is a one-year action agenda or itinerary. So we've got our destination, our map, and a one-year itinerary. With that action agenda, I'll be working with staff, and you will see me back when we will go through who is responsible, what are the milestones, when are those going to occur, including a policy agenda for you for the next year as the Mayor and Commission. So for me, that is the start. There's one other key thing, and that is, what is the purpose or mission of your city government? That is the vehicle that is going to take you to the future. So mission is really critical to define guiding principles about how you expect the city to operate, provide services, and interact with your community. So we will get into that level of detail. So our elements really here are the vision, which is 15-year destination, a plan, which is our map to get there, looking out for five years to one, and a one-year action agenda, which is an itinerary for the next year, and a mission statement that says how we get there. Today, as we go through and talk about things, I'm going to get you each to talk about your vision in terms of what legacy do you want to see, and what is the thing that is most important about Dania Beach if you go out 15 years? So that's the strategic planning framework. Today, I would like to, hopefully not bore you, but do some framing, about, take maybe 15 minutes to a half hour, framing of the process and framing effective cities today. So then we will dive in, roll up our sleeves. We're also going to deal with governance. Governance is how do you all want to operate? You set the tone. Every actions that you take are things that are, set the tone for the city, what you say, what you do. One of the things at a challenge this week is a newly-elected Florida Commissioner in another city that I only work for the Commission on Tuesdays. I will not work the other days. And I tried to explain to her that you all have a tattoo on your forehead that's Mayor or Commissioner, a target on your chest, and you're fair game 24/7. And I said, what happens when they see you at church, or call you, or see you at the supermarket? Well, I'll just say they need to make an appointment for Tuesday. She's going to have a little learning experience because I see several of you nodding your heads. But she said, I'm just a one-day Commissioner, and that's Tuesday. That's our meeting. Hello. My point here is, today, being an elected official is a big challenge. In the last month, I've had in three different cities angry citizens approach. After a council meeting, Commissioners with loaded guns. We live in a very tense time today, and you say, well, it may be that the federal and political know. No, it's down in the cities as well. So with that, let's be real positive about today and the future. I'd like you to go to Section 1 and flip in the books to the page that looks like this. Three circles, several pages in Section 1.
Governance is what?
Three circles. The first part is dealing with how you became the Council Manager form. That's what it's traditionally called. But the three circles, for me, reflect this form of government. Governance, there are three key processes: governance, management, and service. Governance is the Mayor and City Commission here being the Board of Directors. You determine what this city is going to be, what the goals, the future, the resources, the taxes. Everything, you determine the what. Delegate that to staff to say, how to figure it out. Starts with, Anna, you're City Manager, but it goes all the way down, and the services are the actions by your employees, what they do on a day-to-day basis. Residents don't like that action. Who do they call? Or they call you, even at inconvenient times. And one of the things I really suggest to all Commissioners is the magic word, let me check into it. Because sometimes they may not tell you the whole thing. They may only give you 40%. And as you check into it, you find out, oh, my goodness, there's more to this story. And in this state, it's a little tough because in other states, Commissioners can call one another and say, what's the history on this? You can't do that here. You've got to call staff to say, is there background? So let me check into it, I think is magic words for Commissioners. It can get you out of a lot of trouble because even if you say, well, that's a good point. What are the citizens? They see that as you're in agreement, then they call staff and say, oh, by the way, I've already talked to the City Commission, and they've already committed for me. And the staff's going, Anna, they're going, what do I do now? So that, for me, is part of being a team. The other thing is, there is a hierarchy. But a key is the overlap between management and governance. We have worksheets in the book, uncensored. Those are inputs for every department. So you can see what they have. There's a series of them on what they feel their successes have been, what their challenges are, what their actions they're working on, what are new initiatives. How did COVID impact them? And that's all in your book. That's referenced. And why it's in the book, because it helped me formulate and draft the plan, as well as the mission and vision. So for me, that is. About 12 pages back. It looks like great. For me, the prostate flakes, you can remember what a team is.
What's a page number, Lyle?
My pages are different than yours, so that's why. Did you have, I have the management version of this, and you have the commission, so we added a few pages.
What's the title again? What section?
It's called Effective Team, Section 1. I forgot this morning. I just took the new sections, but I left the old one in for me on this one. And you know, you got it?
Yeah, page 24.
24.
Page 24.
24, yeah. Thank you.
24. Everybody got it?
Yeah.
If you can remember prostate flakes, you can remember a team. And they are great. Teams that are effective start off with common goals. Remember, you and I talked about it based upon your experiences playing a lot of sports. If you don't have a common goal that rallies the team, you may have all the talent in the world, but you may not be able to work collaboratively together. And today, in our society, many individuals are more interested in the I rather than a common goal that really unifies you. The unifying is a unifying vision, goals, action agenda. That's what ties you together. For athletic teams, it's winning and achieving that championship. So for me, that's where you start, and that's why today is really critical for building an effective team. If we've got a common goal, we need to have, define what are the roles and responsibilities. People on a team are, do not look alike. If everybody on the team looks alike, I'll tell you, you've got an ineffective team. Everyone of us as individuals have our own talents and our own approaches. And for me, a team is how do we blend those together to achieve a common goal? I played baseball through college. Guess what position I played? Look at my body. There is only one. I am the slowest person. And I've got quick reflexes, but for to get me to run any distance, boy, that's death. I did get a hit off Tom Seaver. I sort of got a hit. I hit a line drive to right field and got thrown out at first base. So you can tell my speed is slow. So to put me in a different position, it isn't going to be effective. So we need to respect each other and have respect for the different ideas and approaches and styles. If I was a council member, I, for you, and you gave me this as a packet, sorry, Anna, I would probably not read this whole thing. I would want a one-page summary, give me your recommendations, and I then, I will look at what's back here as background. I'm a visual person. I've spent six hours plus driving around your community. Your interview said, Lyle, you ought to look at this. The only challenge was, I got here, and I thought, there's where the Parker Center is, but I didn't realize it's way back around here. But for me, I'm, others of you will read in detail, highlight, and come with questions. So there's a respect for each one of you that you may prepare and come to the meetings differently. That's the role. The fourth, a third thing in a team is execute, and that's making timely decisions. But one of the things I'm very critical of a lot of cities is, if you're an effective athletic team, a performing team, putting on a theatrical performance, you need to evaluate and adjust. We do not do a very good job evaluating and adjusting. We tend to try to get perfect. If you look at any athletic team, what do they do during a timeout? They're evaluating and adjusting. We need to be able to evaluate and adjust. So for me, strategic planning is not a document, but an ongoing process that allows you to be nimble and agile to achieve goals. Very, very critical. So what we come up with here, there'll be monitoring devices during the year where you, as Mayor and Commission, say, hey, where are we? What do we need to do to adjust? Cities have had to adjust tremendously during the last year as we relate to COVID. And the cities that have been nimble have been very, very effective. Going on.
We're going to move this away.
I'll let you guys make your adjustments.
I'm going to go grab some headphones because I really can't hear Lyle too well. So maybe with some headphones, I'll be able to hear.
She can't hear. Like right now or the whole entire time?
That's anything where she's gone.
What's that?
It hurt. Don't we want to get back going?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think Commissioner Armway's getting headphones because he couldn't hear.
Okay.
That's good. You want this one?
No, I'm good.
I brought three.
I have like seven. Okay, and the Vice Mayor went to get her headphones.
Want to give it a try, Lyle? See if she can hear you now.
Can you hear me now? Lawrence, can you hear me?
Commissioner Oddman, can you hear Lyle?
I can hear him like he's 10 rooms away. I can hear everyone else clearly, but I can't hear him. But it's, I'm seeing if my headphones work.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but like I said, I can hear you like you're 10 rooms away, and I have everything.
I take my mask off. Is that any better?
No, 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 no. You don't have to do that. I think once I put these headphones in, we'll be fine.
We have some additional masks at any point anybody wants to switch out their mask.
All right, one of you talk.
You need us to say something?
Can you hear us, South Commissioner?
I know. I think it's all of us.
Yeah, because you're clear. Yeah, yeah. Frank, do you think, what would be the suggestion, go to YouTube?
I don't know. If you go on YouTube or on RingCentral, everyone is 100% here.
Right.
Yeah, and it's not just one of us either, because I said something, and she didn't even react when you said anything or when any of you others.
Hello. No, I can hear all you guys. I just can't hear, I can hear Lyle, but like it sounds like he's 10 rooms away. So I was trying to put in, to pair my headphones to it, but it's taking a minute. But it's, it's fine. I can just.
We can hear you loud and clear.
How about to continue forward? If it becomes too much of a problem, I'll, I'll let you go. Oh, right, okay.
I can't hear you. What? Tom, can you do a mic check for us?
Yeah.
Schneider?
Yes, Mayor, hi. Testing 1, 2, 3, 4.
Yes, can you do a roll call just to make sure that you can hear us?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor James?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Here.
Commissioner Oddman?
Yeah.
City Manager Garcia?
Here.
City Attorney Ansborough?
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You ready to get back?
Yeah.
This is part of being nimble and agile, as we just talked about, evaluating and adjusting. And I think that is really important, and so as we go through and prepare the document, don't see this as rigid. See it as a fluid process. Attitude is a willingness to cooperate and work together. And it is a respect for each other, respect for our styles, our ideals, and that is really important for a team. That if you do not have that attitude, that we can work together and collaborate, the team will not be successful. Trust, for me, is earned. It is earned because we've achieved our goals, fulfilled our roles, and respected the roles of others. We had an attitude, or executed in a timely way that has provided value to the community. Keyword, you'll hear me come back to it. Are we responding to the value to our community? A is attitude, then, that we have worked together. If we've done those four things, the trust will happen. And it's through performance and actions that trust is built. One other thing about a team. Teams are dynamic and change over time. As you get different players, you need to adjust. Adjust your approach, adjust your game plan in order to be successful. Now, if we look, go back a few pages, and actually to the next page. For me, so it'd be 25, I believe. There are different types of teams, and there are different types of communities. Some, we would drive into, they look bad, the councils fight with one another, and they get labeled a loser. And there are teams, they, they do not produce. They are perennial losers. Football fans, the Browns, for the number of past few years have been known as. Now they're in a playoff. We'll see how they do tomorrow night. But you get, it's hard to get out of it. Think about communities in Broward County. A couple, if I had you write down, and we would never share them, and you put down, give me one or two that have a reputation in South Florida, I would bet that many of you would write down similar cities, if not the same city. Once you get that label, businesses don't want to invest. Bond rating agencies say, we're going to give you a lower bond rating because they don't have the confidence that you are going to make good decisions. So don't ever underestimate your ability at the tone you set in the meeting and your decision. It's not just for the community. It has far-reaching. From economic development, if they've got, an investor has confidence in you, they will invest in your community. If they don't, and that's where that branding gets very important. Competitive. Competitive is, how are we doing? Oh, we're doing okay. How good are we? Oh, we're just about okay. There's a complacency with being okay, an acceptance of it. It's about as good as we can get. It doesn't inspire the city. I call it being the Cubs. I call it being the Cubs, because in baseball for years, hundred years, Laura's laughing at me. They did not have a good, they, how are they doing? We're in first place in September first, but we still got time to blow it. And guess what? They blew it a lot of years.
I was actually thinking it's more like a dolphin.
They, they, they're doing well, but you. The key for me with cities, and what I try to work with cities, is to be a winner, but to become a true champion. A true champion is one that sustains winning over time. You don't just have a winning season, you're able to sustain that winning long term. And part of that for me is having an effective strategic planning process where the team is working together and produces results. It's not having one leader, it's having multiple leaders. It's not having a plan, it's having a strategy. All of that fits together to create a dynamic team. So for me, this is the framework. You can read the other materials in here. But there's some significant challenges. If you would go to section two. And turn to, you can read them, read that section. I would like you to turn to page nineteen. It says turbulent forces. Everybody got it?
No.
Governmental forces.
Page seventeen.
Governmental forces.
Governmental forces.
Leadership, turbulent forces.
Yep.
Page seventeen.
Oh, seventeen.
What are these turbulent forces? One, in, under your form of government, you're supposed to be nonpartisan. In my experience during the last five years, political parties have become much more involved in nonpartisan elections. And that's nationally. I've had a number of mayor and councils in other communities say, I don't want the party's endorsement because I'm here to serve our community. And so for me, uh, I'm seeing this more and more, where individuals are coming in with national priorities and not necessarily focusing on your community. It also has increased the cost of running for office, uh, and that has been significant. So for me, that intrusion into political parties, into nonpartisan, many times the community's issues suffer because you focus on a national agenda and not looking locally. Second point, in your population, if you look at the city, your community, it's like a normal curve. There's twenty percent that are against everything you do. You know them. They will never be satisfied with any decision you ever make. And they're very vocal, many of them get on social media and put out misinformation about you and the city. And that is a real challenge today. And then there's twenty percent on the positive. These are folks that are on your boards and commissions and your supporters and very active in the community. There's twenty percent of those. Those two groups do not get along. Does that make sense, what I just said? If you put them both on a board or a commission, those positive supporters come to you and say, why in the heck did you put me on that? This person is being an obstructionist. They do not want the city to succeed. And then there's ten percent that lean to the negative and ten percent that lean to the positive. And you say, Lyle, you've got really bad math. That's only sixty. Forty percent of your residents don't even know they live in your city. They don't know who you are. The point is that within that negative twenty percent, there is a hardcore five percent. That five percent are extremely negative and are there disrupting and driving folks away. I think we, we've got to focus on the eighty percent, rallying the eighty percent to support us and our vision. Listening to those. We'll listen to all a hundred percent, but don't be driven by that five percent. They will never be satisfied with anything you do, and in many cities, they're putting out disinformation. In one city I worked with, uh, right before the election, they, it was in Dubuque, Iowa, they said, the city's going broke. Uh, and look at, they're in debt. Well, they took the general fund threshold for debt. Added in the water fund, the sewer fund debt, the solid waste debt, and all of a sudden you had this big number. And then they applied it just to the general fund level and said, look at, here's the debt of the city. No, it's in different funds and different revenue sources. That was put out three days before an election, and guess what? Two of them won. Because there is no ability. Today, I think cities need to strategically and aggressively respond to that negative five percent. This may sound extreme. I don't think the five of you should. The institution of the city ought to respond. Because if you respond individually, you get sucked into, my experience, back and forth between them. The city responding to that negative group as the institution with facts and information. Twenty years ago, I'd said, oh, just ignore it. I don't think we can ignore it anymore on social media. Because even your friends, that twenty percent positive, they hear it, hear it, hear it, hear it, all of them, they think, aren't believing it as well. And you're going, Mayor, what is wrong with them? They're going by emotions. And the strategic plan, they do not want you to have a strategic plan. I'll be quite, that five percent, they want you to react to the issues of the moment and go their way. The third point on the next page is people today are more and more mean. Vicious in their emails and actions. City of Barto, Florida, it's up in central Florida, individual is really upset about their utility bill. Took a sledgehammer and went in through the drive-through pay your utility bill window. As I talk to employees in cities, the verbal abuse, the anti-government attitude out there is live and well. And the emails are much more unfiltered, what's on social media is unfiltered. And for me, there's a meanness out there, which is a real challenge for you all as it relates to strategic planning and working together as a team. The fourth one is, there are individuals in every community that are putting out disinformation. It is more than misinformation. It is intentionally putting false information. Even in my interviews, you all talked to me about some of your challenges here, and gave me specific examples where people were putting out intentional disinformation. That's a challenge for the entire city team. And what it's leading to is we're going more by what we hear rather than the hard data. And I think database decisions help the team be effective and help you serve your community better. The next one is the myth of making people happy. I caution you to react to one individual. You may make them happy, but the community may lose its value. So for me, it is community value. I'm going to give you a very unfortunate and sad story. In Illinois, the community I work with, there's a neighborhood that is north of Central Avenue. Central Avenue was built as a two-lane road with parking in a residential area. Today, it's four-lane, and guess what? The speed limit is forty-five miles an hour. What do people drive there? I mean, they're flying down there. This neighborhood wants to get to the park and to the elementary school. So they came in and pressured, we want you to put in the pedestrian flashing lights that then they'll stop. Right. Hello? Probably not likely. And so the city staff studied it and said, that is extremely unsafe. We should not do it. Council agreed on a five-two vote. So they said, okay, we're not putting it in. Social media went nuts. Pressure was on. Next week, they came in with a certified from an engineering company that they should put it in. They crashed. They put it in. The second week, and some of you may can tell where this is going sadly, a mother was walking her two kids, took them to the elementary school. She had her bike, she pushed the button, a truck stopped, the other one could not see it, she was hit and killed. They made it happen, and what is happening to the city today, Aaron?
Lawsuits.
Yeah. How big a check do you want? It is a big lawsuit right now, and it's pointed at the city. So trying to understand the needs of your community, but it isn't just meeting those because it may lead, make that one individual happy, but the overall community. I love it when you all get calls saying, we've got speeding in our neighborhoods, and so we'll put a police officer there. More times than not, who's going to be the first one nailed? Who's likely to be the first one nailed?
The complainant.
The sin, the complainer. That's right. The complainer, well, I manage those other folks, not me. And so I think there's a real challenge of listening to the community, but doing what you think is best for the overall community. That is a challenge for you today. If you flip to the next page, uh, several things here are challenges. Keep going. Challenges is a couple of things challenging you all. Moving back to the, uh. Most cities are finding there's increased cost of providing governmental services today. There's real challenges. The number of cities I work with in this environment today, there's a lot of construction still being done. Trying to find somebody in the trades can be very, very challenging today. And it's driving up the costs. In some communities, capital projects are moving forward. Some are coming in with good bids, and some of them are coming in with extremely high bids. Uh, and it's community to community, but the cost of government is going up. Determining who should pay at times. People will come here from other communities. Do we serve our community, and is there a differential in price and cost recovery? Uh, every city needs to be prepared for a major incident. Uh, you say, it's not going to happen in our community. Every community is vulnerable, and that takes resources and planning. Uh, then infrastructure, and many of you talked to me about roads in your city, roads, big issue. If. If the infrastructure starts to crumble, the city will crumble. And for me, it's investing in that. Many cities don't even know the conditions of their roads, of their facilities, and it's trying to get a life cycle process. And that relates very directly to strategic planning, uh, and we know what our conditions are. Not one that is really being prepared for. You call vaguely Felton. Wastewater and water operators. So they went to the college and partnered with them to train water and wastewater operators. The average age in this country is fifty-four years old. Where's the next generation? They, these jobs pay well, but you have to have operator's license, you have to have an AA degree. It is, it's not like, oh, we can get anybody off the street and work at the wastewater treatment plant. That is something that is, where's the next generation? And our schools are not preparing folks for a lot of jobs. Uh, today, many cities struggle with, uh, good law enforcement agencies, they may have gotten two hundred applicants five years ago, now they, they get fifty, and you look at some of the applicants and go, oh my God, we're going to hire them? Uh, so the challenge of, how do you keep a good workforce? And we'll talk about that as we go through the strategic planning. Mission creep. That is where you creep into areas. Some are very legitimate. One of the challenges that a lot of the cities I work with is, what are you dealing, how do you deal with the mental health issues and crises in our country? What role does a city play? There's less money for nonprofits. There's less money for other programs. States and feds have cut back. If somebody in your community tried to commit suicide, who do you refer them to? That is a big challenge. Uh, mental health issues are cramming our justice system and our jails. What role does a city play? One, uh, actually, three fire chiefs have done studies, ten years ago, one in a ten medical calls was mental health related. Today, guess what it is? Four in five are mental health related. What role do you play in that? And that needs to be a conscious effort on all of you. And the final thing that I would go to is on the next page. Most states, our state legislators are not our friends. You're going, what are you saying? They're partners with us. State legislatures are doing more to intrude into home rule. And what you can do for your, it's like they have amnesia when they leave and go like to Tallahassee. Uh, they are putting restrictions on services, on revenues, on your ability to interact that do not apply to them. Hopefully that makes some sense. But they're, they are doing things that are a threat to your future. So for me, uh, the lobbying and advocacy on the part of cities becomes a real critical issue going forward. And if you're not building those relationships and having presence there, some of the items in our strategic plan that we worked together to develop are going to need a partnership with the state. And that is relationships with them, your legislators, and an active presence. Now, this one makes some sense, you obviously, number of you nodding your heads. I think that's a real challenge today. Unfortunately, I, in one city I worked with, the individual got elected to, he left the council, very, very good council member. And he went to the state legislature. Now he's head of the committee there. And I talked to Gary, I said, Gary, the things you're supporting at the state legislature are totally contrary to what you wanted as a city council member. He says, well, in order to get ahead in the party, I've got to vote, go that way. I'm going, and this is a fellow who worked as a president of the community college, retired, became a council member. And retired early in about fifty-five, very good council member, but he left, and it's like, where the heck are you? These are challenges, all the ones I just went through are challenges to our strategic planning efforts and you as you make decisions. A key learning point here is that outreach to the community, both in terms of communications. And the communications is two-way. Getting feedback from them and also involving them, but also being proactive in your communications there. And many of you talked to me about, some of you may or may not, one of the action items is more proactive. And many of you talked to me about, some of you may recall, one of the action items is more proactive communications from the city. I see Joyce raised, "You all brought that up." When it's all, all of you, we will talk about that when we get around to it. That is part of our future. Flip to the next section. Section three. The strategic planning model is very clear that I went through this morning. You can see that diagram on page two. I'd like you to go to page three. It's a house. It's in section three, and it looks like a house, like this. If we look at the strategic planning, a number of things are going to come is how big a house do you want? And how big a house can we afford? There are certain things you do that you have no choice on. Those are core business activities. You have to have a city clerk. You have to maintain open records. But you do not have to have a police or fire department. You're going, "What?" I'll give you an example. Knoxville, Tennessee, fire service is not provided by a governmental body. It's provided by a private organization. So how do you get fire service? Any of you think about, how do you get it? What, Lori? You have to subscribe for it. And if you don't subscribe, guess what they do, Lori? They don't. You may have recalled about three years ago, it was on all the news channel. The fire department shows up. And this house is on fire. But they did not pay. They were not a subscriber. But what did the fire department do? They did. Remember, they let it burn to the ground. They saw, there were pictures that some of you may have drawn. They were squirting on the homes on both sides to protect them and let it burn. The guy tried to call in a credit card as they were rolling, but it didn't go. Because when it came up on the screen, non-subscriber red screen.
But is there no morality in that?
I could not agree more. From my perspective, I would go, I would still fight the fire. But this is a private business and they said they did not pay? They're not a customer? They don't get the service?
I mean, as a fire station, I mean, you know, you go, you don't have insurance. You go to the hospital and you need medical care. They can't just not give you medical care. I mean, maybe they can't.
Your point is right on target. But most city councils, all the cities I work with have a fire department. All the cities I work with have a police department. But it's a core business by choice. If you, let me give you another example. If you go to Illinois and Iowa, many communities, the water is not provided by a governmental agency. It's called Iowa American or Illinois American. Where is their headquarters? Corporate headquarters?
Probably in the state.
Saudi Arabia.
Another country, yeah.
So the city like Peoria is now saying, "We need to buy our water system to control it." But there's a big price. So in the Midwest, which is a real tough thing when you're dealing with growth, how would, how do you control things when you don't have the ability to influence water or sewer? It's provided by a non-governmental agency. Most cities choose to get into that. The key then is defining what service level and how we pay for that service level. Quality of life. And many of you talked about the importance of quality of life for your residents here. That's your part. That is places like this. Is there a nicer view than over my left shoulder here? Not much. Or your beach, which is a unique asset for your community. Those are things that you say, "That is just as important for us." If you look at it, it didn't go in. Those quality of life is what distinguishes you from your neighbors. And that's why people want to live and be here. And we'll talk about how we enhance that quality of life in our stra... But it is, if you look at the three floors, they're all four. Additions are where you creep into providing a service and you've never made a decision to do it. An example of this in Florida is a lot of communities have gotten into, "We need community events." There's one in, just north of us in Palm Beach County that I work with. When we started, they city sponsors 46 community events. That city paying for them. Not all of them were of equal importance. When they did their analysis, they whittled it down to four. Four events that we will act. The others, we can partner with, but they're going to have to cover our costs. But we get creep into those. The classic was in Eustis. They had the Sun Love Festival. What year was that started in? Any ideas?
Like 69 or something like that.
68, you're correct. And today, the manager went out and guess what? On Friday night, there were 22 people and peaked out at 37. Paul Burke was the city manager at the time. And Paul said, name of the council, "We spent $37,000 on this event for rock fans." You could go to each one who participated, give them a check for a thousand bucks. And today, guess what? That doesn't exist. But sometimes things like that get a life of their own and they're on the roof. If the roof gets too big, the house collapses. So as we go through the strategic planning process, we're going to look at how big a house and where your resources are to support it. One thing, if you look at the bottom, is the foundation. If we do not have a strong foundation, that is, our financial resources, our human resources, our technology today, particularly with COVID, is extremely critical. Our infrastructure, water, sewer, facilities, if those are in bad shape, guess what? The house collapses. So keep that in mind as we go through the strategic planning process. The house, how big a house do you want here? And how does that relate to strategic planning? From now on, I'm going to shut up and we're going to get into more discussion. But I wanted to frame this for you going forward. I would like you to flip to section five. And do page two. It says, "My legacy." Section five, page two. And the next page is your vision. I'd like you to pull a pen out or a pencil. And I would like you to give me the three or four things that are most important for you. When you leave as mayor or commissioner, what is the legacy you want to leave for your community?
Hi, what page are we on?
We're on section five, page two and three. Mine. Lauren?
Did you get a Commissioner Hahn?
No, I don't, where do you see sections? I don't see any sections.
The little tabs, count the little tabs. One.
Section five, okay. And page?
Page two. It should say, "City of Dania Beach, My Legacy."
Okay, I found it. Thank you.
And so I'd like you to give me three or four things that are most important for you, for your legacy. And if you come back, if you went away and came back in 15 years, what is important for you is your vision for the future. So it's looking at your legacy and vision. I'll give you a few minutes to jot your thoughts down. You don't need to write everything, but just some reminders for you because I'm going to give you each a chance to talk to each other. What are three or four things that are your legacy? And three or four things that you want to see?
I'll do the visions.
No, both of, both pages. Both the legacy when I leave and the vision that I want to see for my community in 15 years. What are the three or four things most important for you? Do well there, Kediva. Give me a thumbs up when you're ready. Let's talk about this. What I'd like to do is have each one of you talk about your legacies first, and then we'll come back and talk about your vision. First two that I saw with their thumbs up. Tamara, you want to start off?
Sure.
Your legacy, what do you want to make sure is out there when you leave?
I want to make sure our communities are more stabilized than what they are now. When we look at a lot of our communities and what they used to be versus what they are now, we have very little economic stabilization in our neighborhoods where we could have more smaller businesses in the communities to support those smaller businesses. We don't have those. We have a lot of vacant businesses. We have a lot of rundown businesses. And I know that we have offered some grants, but I don't, I don't believe there's enough help for our small businesses to really thrive and to keep the money circulating in our cities. My second thing was thriving parks and recreation facilities. That ties into my third thing, which is Safer City. And I think when you have a thriving parks and recreation department and facilities, that you're able to program the communities regardless if it is, yes, the quality of life thing, regardless if it's our young children and being able to reach them at a point to where they could be influenced and molded the correct way and staying busy and not being on the streets, getting into, you know, things that they have no business getting to and trouble. And, and also our, our aging community and our, and our young adults. There is nothing at our parks and rec right now really for our young adults to be able to partake in. So you don't see a lot of community cohesiveness because there really isn't anything that is, that is bringing us together. And as you're aging, that quality of life, you know, my grandmother spends a great deal of time just in the house. And although we had gracefully aging and with COVID, everything is done right now. But that's just one program. And I know that, you know, one of our former commissioners has a senior program here. But having, really having the thought of, of our aging community, that's, that's something that is important to me, too. Better schools. We want to attract quality residents here, quality businesses here. People want to move where they know that, you know, they are comfortable where their children are going to go to school. My, my child currently doesn't go to school in Dania Beach and I live right next to schools. And that's a problem for me. So being able to have better schools, and I know a lot of that is not at our discretion or, or, you know, I know that the school board plays a large role in those things because I've had several conversations with the superintendent and trying to demand certain things and it just doesn't work the way I thought it was going to work when I first was elected. And lastly, sound infrastructure. You know, we see a lot of what's going on in other cities. And I don't want to be those cities. I don't want to be the next Fort Lauderdale where you have all these aging pipes and infrastructure and flooding and major issues. We have major issues now and we are investing in our infrastructure. And we have a lot of capital projects that are going to address, you know, our flooding issues. But with the amount of development that's coming here, I, I really think that we have to be careful because I don't think we have the infrastructure currently that can accommodate a lot of these ditch projects that are coming up all over the city. You want me to do vision or no?
No. I do have a question on, on safer community. What other things would you, do you want to see as your legacy as it relates to a safe community?
I want to see more of an interaction between our law enforcement and our community. Because currently, you know, there's a big divide. There's a big divide in this nation. There's definitely a divide that trickles down to the local communities. I want, I want our children and our community members to see law enforcement as something positive and not necessarily something negative. You know, you see kids now and they run from the police when they haven't done anything wrong because they've been trained that police to bad or whatever the narrative is. And that's going to take work from law enforcement, city and, and the community to be able to bridge that relationship to where, you know, we're, we're not worried about the police policing us, they're part of us.
Comments from others that Tamara just brought up? Any others have comments or questions for her? Is that clear? Those are good. Marco, what do you got? What do you want to see as your legacy?
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Well, Mayor hit on a lot of the same stuff, but I think to start off with on the, I separated out some of the comments that I had here. One with a V and one with an L, the legacy or the visions.
Legacy right now.
So we'll go into the legacies right now. One of the legacies I'll start off with is public safety. And the public safety to me in our city right now is of utmost importance. We've had some issues and I think we, I think our, our police, fire and paramedics have done a great job. But as the city grows with everything, I think that we need to... But as the city grows with everything, I think that we need to, uh, have a legacy that we're a safe city to come to. My legacy is that, that we would have a safe city to come to and people would not be afraid to come here from any type of negative news. So we have to support, um, our public safety as much as we can and, uh, be able to, uh, you know, have that, our, our city ready to adapt to all of our growth. Um, another thing is that's a, is a big thing for me is the parks and recreation. Uh, I remember when I was a young man that, um, I played ball here and I'm sure that, you know, the mayor as well with all of her family going back, we used to have large sports programs here. And, um, the, the, right now we're at a minimum and it has to do a lot with the change of times. And, um, not necessarily that we've, we've faltered anyway, but maybe we haven't pushed hard enough. Um, I think that, uh, in today's world, I do notice, and I'm going to bring a couple of things into play that, that may have some alternatives ideas for this, but our parks need to be redone and we can get into all that at a different time, the legacy part of it, but our vision part, but uh, the legacy is to see us come back again with, uh, a, a great youth programs, uh, and the, and the, and the seniors programs. You know, I remember when I was growing up, they had shuffleboard courts and things like that. We don't even have that stuff available to us anymore, uh, other than, you know, the seniors club and they, and the seniors go places and they gracefully aging and they do things. But we don't indirectly offer anything within the city. So the seniors need something to do and the, and definitely the children. Uh, you know, we have a couple of sports programs working, but we need to get them all working again. I can remember back before we even had 30,000 people, we had, our programs were so large that we had, we played it, we were played within our own city. And then after that, now we have to go out of the city. Now we're out there, but don't even have a program. And that has a lot to do with, um, with today's world because of, um, kids playing on their handheld devices and so on. Uh, as you know, I'm in the bicycle business and when COVID hit, uh, it was a good, it was a, it was a sign that stated that we need parks and recreation even more because it was funny that when everything got shut, it's not, nothing's funny about COVID, don't get me wrong here, but when they, when the, when the government shut down a lot of the restaurants and stuff, I never sold more bicycles in the 46 years I've been working there than I did in the month of March and April. Uh, because the parents actually got out there, got their children outside and were outside again. It was a great feeling to see that the families are doing things united together. As the mayor was saying about bringing families together and so on, I think that just established a point in my mind that we need to push hard on parks and recreation. We need to, we need to get the youth programs back out there, get the parents coaching again and stuff like that. I don't want to drag that out, but that is, it's, it's really, uh, on my, on my list, uh, up there. Um, I can tell you that, um, we're noted for our beach and our pier. And I feel that the, uh, have a legacy of leaving, uh, the commission in my four years. Uh, I would like to be part of the, the, our great commission we have here. I think we can all work together. I think we all have the same ambition, uh, to get the, uh, something done with the Dania Beach Grill, the parking garage that needs to be done. And the, um, beach renovation projects and the reef projects. I think the reef project there today was very exciting. Um, and I think that, uh, we have those attractions. A lot of my visions will refer back to the legacies that I'm, I'm having in mind here. Uh, but these are things that, uh, establish us on the map. I think that, uh, when we start talking about, uh, the infrastructure and so on, which we'll get into my visions on that. Uh, you know, it's, it's tough to say, but you know, without the, without the, uh, without us doing the development process, which we should be careful of, we have no funds and, and I don't want to get into all that right now. That's a whole nother thing, but it takes money to do all these things and, and the money comes from, uh, the millions of dollars that are created from the development. We just have to be careful. Uh, a lot of people, some people are going to get hurt, just like you were talking about the 80, 20 a little while ago, and then the 5% instead of playing. Uh, we're going to have to do the best we can for what's best in our community. But, uh, my legacy, my like personal legacy is that we, we get this beach in order and we get into the second phase, we get the Dania Beach Grill or of whatever the city decides to do with it and, and put it back out there to bring attraction down there. And I think all that is going to revert, revert back to us, uh, renegotiating the deal with the, with, uh, with the, um, the college. And, uh, I brought stuff up of my, uh, some ideas which I'll discuss at the commission meeting one night about how we can do that and be good for the college, be good for the city where everybody benefits from it. And, but we'll get into that later. Uh, but I think that's important that we get with, um, that garage going so that we can get our beach back in shape and have parking available. The rest of my time I'll take when it, when you call for vision because I do have visions and more things that will come out of it, but it costs money, but those are some of the things I think are, that are ultra important to us. They get the parents and kids back involved, get, uh, our beach back out there, back where we can get out there, people can spread out. If this COVID lasts a long time or anything else, we need to get outside, we need to spread out and we need to be able to have outdoor activities and it's important to me that we move on this as well. Thank you.
Yeah, we're seeing some common themes already emerging here. The reason I'm giving this a chance for each one of you to share with each other. This is a few, it's rare to do this. We get sucked into dealing with issues and not say what are the outcomes. So from my perspective, it's really reinforcing what I heard in the interviews. Lori, what do you got? Uh, what's your legacy?
Um, a lot of it is, I think it's going to overlap as well. You, I know you just said it's going to overlap with, with what the mayor said, with what Vice Mayor said.
That's okay because there's some themes that, that, because I, I need to make sure that some of your specific comments now get reflected in the vision and plan. If I missed it, we need to bring it in.
No, I, I got, um, and I, that's the whole goal there. We want to come to our common theme. So I, um, but I, it's also.
Your legacy is?
A few things. My, my, the one thing that I, that I, I've always talked about and I still am talking about, we've both mentioned, we've, everybody's mentioned it so far is infrastructure. And I want to, I, we need to, you have to have the bones in order to do anything else. So if you put the foundation in, then that's what's going to make everything else grow. And it's a problem that's been happening all over the country, not just here. Um, but we're seeing it in neighboring cities. I think the mayor mentioned Fort Lauderdale. That's something, that's something that I've talked about. I've been talking about this for years and, and saying Fort Lauderdale is going to have a major problem at some point because they're building and building and they don't have the infrastructure to support it. And then sure enough, they've had all of these problems with, you know, flooding and pipes bursting and all sorts of issues. We don't want to be that city and that's something that we really have to focus on. And I think it's, that's probably the most important thing that I really want to focus on because it's, it's been left behind for so many years. And now we are starting to get some projects. We do have a number of, um, drainage projects that are going forward. So I'm glad to see that and it's something that I think that we all really need to focus on. Um, uh, I also, um, uh, public safety is a, a major issue for me as well. Um, I want this to be the safest community that we possibly can be. Um, we've had some increases lately with, uh, violent crimes, which is something that, you know, we shouldn't have in a city. This is a, it's a, it's generally always been a fairly safe city. And to see the things that are happening, I know a lot of it has to do with COVID. A lot of it does because people are, it, you know, there's higher tensions. People are stuck in houses together for longer periods of time. There's more domestic issues, that sort of thing. Um, but we need to do some more things to make this more of a safe, a safer community. I'd like to see some things where, um, some more common projects. We, we had the fishing thing with the police and the kids. That was fantastic. I'd love to see more things like that. Um, I'd like to see that not just with, with the kids, but also with the adults, with, um, our seniors. And getting police and fire involved in things with the community more. I've got, actually got more than three, but I'll, I'll try to. Um, education and employment. Um, we have more people than ever that are unemployed because of COVID. We need to get more into the retraining of people and get people more involved and more interested in looking at different opportunities that can be out there. And I'd like to have that, um, as something that I get accomplished, and I am working on it, but that we, that I get accomplished, that we get accomplished as a, as a team. Where we get more people employed, more people educated in different areas, not necessarily going to college or, or things like that, but actually doing things that are going to help the community. You talked about earlier about how you can't find people to work in the water plants. Um, you can't find people to work in the marine industry because they're not skilled. Um, you can't find people even to work in healthcare in some cases. We need more and more people that are involved in these fields and that are learning about them and make them more interesting to them. Um, and, and if you can make them interesting and something that people maybe haven't thought of before, but, you know, expand that and they get more of a, um, something that's enticing to people, then they will be able to find jobs in fields that are always a fee for people. And good jobs, good paying jobs. So I want to see that succeed. I'd also like to see, we have a lot of like unfinished projects. Um, and I, and I know everybody's got a whole list of projects that need to get done, but there are some things that just need to get finished. We need to get back with the Dania Beach Grill and get that taken care of. We need to get our historical buildings up to speed. Um, our Iver Swanson building, it's been sitting and sitting and sitting. And every time I drive past it, it makes me sick. Um, we have, uh, our, the women's club is a, is attached to a historical building and it's, you know, it, they've had termites for years. And nobody has ever done anything about it. And it's not just currently, it's years this has been going on. This is not something that happens overnight. It's been happening forever. And we just need to finish some of those projects and, and try to get them to a better place so that we can, you know, be proud of our city and be proud of the history and be proud of, of the, the different things that, you know, if people are going to come into the city and look at the his- the history that's here, let's keep it. Let's show them, you know, what they, what they want to see. They, they don't want them going to see a building that's surrounded by fencing and, you know, tape and whatnot and they, and they can't even get in to see anything. If I can just throw one more thing in there. Another thing that I really would like to, that I'd like to make part of the legacy is more unification in the city. Um, we have a lot of, of separate entities, um, multiple, you know, um, we have multiple seniors, senior organizations. We have, um, we have, we have two American legions. I mean, we have, you know, multiple events that take place at different parks. And we need to bring people together more. And the best way to do that, I think, is if you're doing things together as a group. And you bring them into a, a situation where they're actually interacting with each other. You know, I've had in the past before COVID and we could actually like have little parties and events and things like that. I've had, you know, people from all different walks of life, all different places and actually tried to have them introduce themselves to somebody that they don't know. They may have been neighbors for years, lived in one part of the city or another part of the city, lived here their entire lives and never knew each other. And I think it's important that we get more people interacting with each other so that we can actually move forward and as, as a team, as one group, one city. There's just, there's too much division and we need to try to do what we can and make that better. That's all.
Yeah, your, your last point, if you look at cities that are effective, building community is important for the sustainability of a community. And that is building relationships with one another. Marco talked about the, the families, bringing them together and doing family activities. It's also with your neighbors. So you're going to see that as a theme coming up, uh, in, in a lot of the, uh, both vision and plan. Joyce, what do you got? What's your legacy going to be?
I'm gonna start all over. Thank you, Ralph. All right. So. Okay. All right. All right. So, like I said, I've been looking at the safety and security because I believe you have to have a safe and secure, uh, beachfront property. We only have 700 feet to make it the absolute best. And I believe and I'm glad that Commissioner Oddman is bringing the Thousand Mermaid Project because it's like taking care of the beach from the inside out and replacing the coral. But if you're going to invest a hundred thousand dollars in these projects, then the whole thing has got to be absolutely from the inside out. And we need, and additional staffing and different, um, people to really stay within their roles. I really like when you have the great roles because everybody should not, they're not a jack of all trades. Our lifeguards are not a jack of all trades. They are doing so much above and beyond. They are fantastic lifeguards, but their main role and responsibility should be saving lives. But they are out there stretching themselves, you know, doing dog enforcement. If I told you how many dog enforcement, you know, it's, it's really, you know, and it's part of being safe. You know, we have an ordinance that has a, a no dog policy or no pet, no animal policy. And I love dogs. But if we're not going to enforce the ordinances that we have, then we should not have that. So people don't pick up after it's an environmental issue. And, um, I really, really feel that we need to have strong and strict enforcement and security because those bonfires are now spreading to our actual beach and we just had a fire and it is really the, what we need to change is the reputation of the beach of being unsecure. So, uh, people know after five o'clock, they start coming. I got a picture with a man with pallets piled high. They're getting ready to go, start burning and start get their bonfires on. And I believe, I personally believe that they have spread over to the staircases because people know that there's no security. We need cameras. We need to be able to see our 700 feet. We need to be able to playback that video and we need to see what's going on, on our beach. But that is very huge to me. Um, the, my other major passionate problem and issue or that I would like to see my legacy is improved communication and technology. Technology is huge for me. Um, not only for, uh, our city, but our, when we have these playback, sometimes people cannot see, people cannot hear. we have these playback, sometimes people cannot see, people cannot hear. And our technology systems, um, as far as keeping records, as far as our commission meetings, being able to search. If I, if a resident came up and, and had an issue on a certain address and a certain property, can I go look it up on our Dania Beach website and find exactly where, you know, where was this commission meeting? What was this information about? We need to have improved technology all the way around and communication that is user friendly. Um, when I tried to go and reading permits, uh, virtually, it was like red tape beyond red tape beyond red tape. And I am a beachgoer and I'm technology savvy. So I can only imagine somebody 60, 70, 80 years old trying to do the same thing. And I also feel that way with the seniors because, uh, when they, they want to attend these commission meetings, there may be some seniors right now who would love to hear what's going on in this room. But Ring Central is not the easiest, most user friendly technology, you know, for seniors. Maybe they can call in, maybe we can find ways for them to participate. But we have to look into systems that are user friendly for our residents. And, you know, documents are also getting lost. I had, uh, you know, residents call me about a, a just a housing project that was, um, eight years old. The documents are lost in the city. So, you know, and I, I was just hired November 16th and I'm, I'm, I'm writing, you know, my HR documents by hand. So, I mean, these are things that most cities, most colleges, you know, you, you have upgraded technology systems where things are user friendly and, and, and make the city and communication for all residents, young and old, better for the entire city. So, and my third thing is landscaping. Beautiful, 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 gorgeous, gorgeous city. You know, when you drive into Boca, you know you are in Boca. You know, it is, it is not that we want to be Boca, like you said, I want to be Dania Beach. But when you come off the airport and you see that Dania Beach sign with that landscaping around those signs, that is absolutely gorgeous. So I think really that level of beautification, that level of landscaping, that level of, of, of care with how we care about our city, it shows from the time you enter our city to the time you leave our city at every single inch. And, uh, last, I do have to say this, because I'm a teacher, education and these programs are huge for me. Um, like the mayor said, I think we need to have improved relationships with, uh, the police and the community. So the PAL program, I want to see that reinstituted. I want to see programs where you have financial programs like junior achievement, where we're teaching our kids math skills and financial skills, literacy skills, and also education in the arts. Um, there are some kids who are not just gonna go to college and go to, you know, get their masters and their PhD. We need to have programs, where drama programs are so that they can, if they want to dance, if they want to, you know, act, if they want to sing, then we have things that, you know, uh, that are attractive for the different learning styles of children. And, uh, last thing.
Thank you.
That's it, that's it. It has to do with the kids though, is mental health, mental, mental, mental health wellness that goes with the kids too. A lot of these kids have seen a lot of violence. So I just want to see where, um, we can provide maybe a wellness center within the community center for the kids, for the youth. Maybe we have people on staff where they can get services for the violence that they've seen in their lives.
That was good. Uh, just one quick comment.
No, we have one more.
Wait, no, I want to make, okay. Fill up one of the points that Joyce just brought up. There is a, a book out, uh, that just came out in December and it hits on one of her points. I know I've got Lauren to get to, but this would be an appropriate time just to mention. It's by, uh, NYU professor said, COVID did not stimulate change, it accelerated change. And your point about technology, seniors are struggling with it, but are becoming very good at it. They got time, uh, and we need to look at that technology component because we're not likely to go back to the way we were. And his point was that technology, Joyce, that you brought up, has been accelerated. It's not new change. Instead of being five years off, it's now at our doorstep. That makes sense? That's why I think reinforcing that point is really a big one today. In cities, that means really some investments in looking at IT. Where are we? But what is not necessarily the cutting edge, but state of the art is fast, reliable, and easy.
Yes, and nimble and flexible.
All right, Lauren, I did not forget you. So what are your thoughts for your legacy?
Commissioner Oddman, can you hear us?
She's on the screen.
She's on the screen. I can see her.
Yeah. Can't hear her.
Lauren, can we?
Can you hear me?
Now we can. So your legacy.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
You're saying yes, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Just fake it if you can, if you can't hear me. All right. It's okay. Just fake it if you can't. All right. Um, so I, I might, I don't know who's talking to me, but I can hear you. Uh, that's, all right. Hold on. All right. So I have you guys back on audio. So now can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I had you, I was trying to do it by having headphones. I couldn't really hear any of you talk, maybe little bits of it. But when I try and talk to you, it was doing a delay and is disorienting. Anyways, so my two things that I wrote down are, I, I, I don't, again, I, I'm assuming you guys all talked about infrastructure, strong economies, public safety. Uh, hopefully none of you didn't, none of you didn't have that. Um, I think that's sort of a commission legacy, uh, and something that every commission should be, uh, laser focused on passing down. Um, for me, environmental policy, strong environmental policy, that's been something that's big for me. It's something that's lacking in the city, uh, which is ironic and unfortunate, being a coastal, a coastal city, to not have strong environmental policies in place that are well integrated into everything from how our economy works to the very culture of the city and into things like what programs we have within the city. So slowly accumulating more and more of those till we nudge the culture within the city so that we're really doing our part to protect and nourish the beach. We're doing our part to, um, protect intercoastal wetlands. Um, the city is, is not so saturated with areas where there's a tremendous amount of litter. Um, and by nudging the culture in that way towards being more aware and thoughtful of, of environmental issues, I think you'll see that on its own, without having to put a tremendous amount of government regulation in place, you'll see that improve as the mindfulness around that issue improves. Right now, it's just strange, again, a coastal city, but the mindfulness about it is, is pretty low. And then second is development of arts and culture within our city. Um, we, we've talked several times about, you know, having an art and cultural center, having theaters, uh, live, live vis, live art, visual art. Um, and that always kind of gets bypassed for the things that, you know, are more important, which is infrastructure, safety, uh, things of that nature. But if you're going to advance the city and develop the city and evolve the city in a real meaningful way, arts and culture is going to have to at some point take priority. I think we took the first step by passing the Art in Public Places, um, fund, which I think if I cared about legacy, which I don't personally, but if I did, I would say in 20 years, if I was still alive and I looked back at, I drove through Dania Beach, I would see that that policy fundamentally changed the public space within this city. And I hope that I see that it changed it all the way east to all the way west, um, in all directions. I, I, I hope it doesn't cool in any one area. But there's a, there's, again, there's so much progress to be made there. Museums, cultural events, educational integration, um, even integrating it into our housing solution, solutions and the development of future communities. Um, this is largely overlooked in our planning, in our administration's planning, and even up in the commission, it doesn't usually get, uh, too much thought. Uh, maybe I've slowly started to see some change in that recently.
Is she frozen? No, it froze. Is she frozen there?
She is frozen.
Lauren, can you hear us?
And the third thing I wrote down was really, uh, nerd.
She keeps freezing.
Signs, and they're all the same for each neighborhood. And I, I really dislike that because I find each neighborhood has such distinct flavor. And while we want to work towards a, I see, are you, did I lose you?
Start with neighborhoods again, if you would.
Okay. The neigh, neighborhood development where we, we nurture the, the individual, the individuality and the specific flavors of each neighborhood. While we want to work towards, uh, the inclusion of the whole, of the whole city, which has been an issue, division, I don't want to wash the whole city. I want to celebrate the distinct flavor of our neighborhoods and develop those neighborhoods, um, to embrace the culture and the things that make those specific neighborhoods special. Out west, there's some very special neighborhoods and they are very different than out east. And I think that's wonderful and worthy of, of highlighting. So development of each neighbor, of each neighborhood's identity and developing and nurturing the pride in each of those neighborhoods. So those are my three things and I primarily chose them because I think they're the most, there's the most room there. It's, they've been the least worked on and, or I shouldn't say the least worked on. They've been the least successful in moving forward. And, um, I'd like to see some real development in those three areas.
That was good. Any comments? Y'all get that? Or three?
Don't have comments because I can't hear them.
Thanks. Uh, I'm gonna jump back. What is your vision? What would be the three or three or four things that you want to make sure get, uh, are there in, in 15 years? And you don't need to repeat your, your legacy, but what's, what's important for you 15 years that'll go back around through the commission? So, starting with you, Lauren, what are the three or four things on your vision?
What are three things of my vision?
Yes.
I don't understand the question. What are three things of my vision?
Yes, on page three, I asked you to write down your vision for 15 years. What are the three or four things most important there?
Oh, I, I, I did not do that page. I just, I did page two only.
All right. Joyce, I'm gonna go back around the way I came. So we'll come back to you at the end. What were your vision for, in 15 years?
What was the comment I had?
Okay, nothing else you would add?
No.
One more? Last thing?
Let's do this again.
All right. No, goes back, I'm gonna be short and sweet. It'll be the sound, sound strong infrastructure. It will, um, a financially sound, robust city that is beautiful with gorgeous landscaping and of course, a world-class, award-winning beach.
Laurie, what about for you?
Um, a lot of it goes back to legacy, but, um, I, I'll put it this way. I would like when people come to Dania Beach, they are specifically coming to visit Dania Beach. A lot of people come to visit South Florida, they go to Miami, or they're going to Fort Lauderdale and they happen to run across Dania Beach. I, yeah, I want, I want it to be people that I know in, in New York and New Jersey saying, hey, we're going down to Dania Beach this year. Not, we're going to Fort Lauderdale.
A true destination.
A very true, so we know it by name. And people actually know who we are and they see all the things that we have to offer and they want to bring more people here. Um, you know, I mean, like, I have, like I said, I have friends and family and whatnot up in, up in the Northeast and they are getting to know us more and more, uh, because they hear about it from me and my husband. But it would be nice if, if you could get that all over the country where people literally are just coming here. They, they're, they don't say that they're flying into Fort Lauderdale, they're flying into Dania Beach. You know what I mean? So it would, that's a big thing. I'd also like us to be, um, with some of these things that are going on, some of the projects that we're doing, I'd like us to be a model for other cities. Um, with the environmental issues, with the beach, with the, the Thousand Mermaids project, that sort of thing, with, um, top shops, with trade programs. I would like to see some of the projects that we're making, on our own and then agreeing to move forward on. I'd like to see us be the model. We do, do it right the first time and then other cities want to copy us. Um, and they want to do the same thing because we're doing good things. And I'd like us to be that city that people are saying, you know what, they started at Dania Beach and now, you know, we're doing the same thing on a bigger scale. Um, and that's not, and not just with, with the programs and the, the different things that we're doing, but also things, um, with unity. If we can actually make a difference in the city and get people together, working together, moving forward together, we could also be a model for that. There's no reason why we couldn't be. We might be small, but we, it's a good place to start, I think. And I think if we do that and we show people how it can be done, then you'll see it in other places as well. So, and of course, I want a beautiful city. I want it to be aesthetically beautiful, functional and, and, um, all the things that we all want, I'm sure. Um, and a, and a good economy and more businesses coming here and wanting to be here and all of that. But that all goes along with the same things we were talking about earlier, so.
Good. Marco, what about for you? Any other things on your vision?
Well, yeah, I didn't even get to my visions. I, everybody was, I thought we were separating, but I see how some of you guys blended them together. So I'm, I'm full of visions.
He's full of visions.
And I'm probably full. I imagine what they're also saying, but that's beside the point. I'm full. Um, you know, a lot of it, um, goes back to, uh, like Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Llewellyn said a little bit. You know, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start it around the city, there's some of the visions that I have and I'll try not to take too long. But, you know, as, uh, you come into, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're next to Seaport, we're next to the airport, and we should be noted as Commissioner Llewellyn said, they, we should know, everybody should know who Dania Beach is. Uh, so we have to come up with some kind of a vision to establish ourselves throughout the United States and out of the countries that let people know. the United States and out of the countries that let people know who we are. I, I, that's a, that's something that, uh, you know, we can work on because we should be a destination by this climate. Uh, we, casino, I mean, we have a lot, we have a lot in the city for a small city. Uh, but coming out of the airport, you know, a perfect example, which you said, you know, I mean, the first thing you hit is great landscaping there and, and which is, I'm gonna bring into more of my vision, it's just, not just there, but everywhere in the city. This morning I saw them trimming the trees on US One and going to another comment you just made, Commissioner Llewellyn, you know, people already are after some of our ideas. City of Hollywood loves our coconut trees up and down, palm trees up and down US One because there are a lot less maintenance and it's more of a natural tree for the, the South Florida. Uh, the oak trees are growing all over the place down there and I'm sure if they had to think about it again, they might've had different, you know, thing, not that there's anything wrong with them, but, you know, the natural trees look good, so people do follow our vision. Going back to the street cleaning, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of our city right now that US One and, uh, all, some of our main arteries are being cleaned on a, on a consistent basis and I see them out there trimming the trees, picking branches up. I also noticed that we, um, had, when people have accidents, they knock down two or three trees, I notice that they don't sit empty or vacant for months. Now I see they're being replaced within, within a 30-day span or less, which is very impressive for us to get that done and get it out there so that we do look good and we don't look like we've been run over. Uh, some of the street cleaning things in my vision also would be some, uh, creating some new ordinances to have people quit putting stuff out so early. Uh, we, I have a plan for that, which we can discuss at the city commission meeting, but our streets need to be cleaned constantly instead of people just dumping when they feel like they want to dump stuff out there. Uh, I think the, uh, the vision of having the chamber get more involved in, in, uh, in some of the stuff that we, you know, we put money out there, I'd like to see some accountability for it. I'd like to see a vision of the chamber getting involved with the, uh, the businesses that, uh, I believe Mayor James was talking about earlier, one of those you that said the businesses need to get involved and you need to come out there and the chamber is what the chamber is designed to do. And, uh, so, you know, that, along with that, um, you know, the, um, what, my other vision is when we start getting this stuff done out at the beach and, and here and all around, we're, we're surrounded by water, so we need to have some kind of a waterway attraction, something that's gonna bring people back around, you know, but whether we have a, a boat ride here to take them up and down the waterways or something, you know, what do we have to offer? We don't, you know, these are all these things that come up and these are, this is private enterprises that can come in here and bring, attract new businesses, you know, from the chamber or the CRA or whoever involves. Um, you know, all, all these things that we're doing creates a financial income, uh, you know, to the city, you know, through sales tax, you know, through property tax, uh, you know, through parking, uh, incomes and stuff like that. So we can use some of these funds to, to keep creating, to keep building. As a business owner, I know, you know, you have to do these little things like, uh, that to keep things going. It doesn't, you can't just put something out there and say, "We're gonna give this here" and then have this for the people without having a way to keep it up, maintain it and so on. So my vision is to get all these things there and have the, the perfect example, the, the ocean prod, the ocean thing we're doing. You're putting something there that somebody's gonna be able to take pictures with, you know, that sets us aside. People can go down the beach and take a picture with a mermaid, you know, and I think little things like that that, that we can bring out there, uh, do it. The landscape on the streets was very important to me. I mean, I think that, uh, all over the city, I'm not talking about just the main arteries, I'm talking about every single place in the city. Landscape being is cheap, maintenance is not, but it, but it, but it sets aside, I mean, would I like to look like Disneyland or Disney World or out there? Of course we would, but I can't imagine what their, uh, their bills are. But I mean, just to keep the streets clean is an inviting thing to the, to people driving through, coming into our city and we are the first, you know, years ago when I, when I was first elected, I said to everybody about traffic and so on, you know, it doesn't make much of a difference what we build in our city because we're next to the airport and the seaport, they're gonna go right through our city to Hollywood, to Howlandale, to out west, and that's what they do. So we might as well stop them with our attractiveness and look good so that they're not afraid to stop in our city. Uh, you know, some little things that, uh, that we can do and, and, uh, it's just something, this is something I'm throwing out there as a vision to, like, when I start talking about boat rides and that, you know, as in Hollywood when my bike shop is there, you know, we had, I created a little, uh, thing called Tour of Hollywood. You know, there's nothing wrong with getting parents and people and families back out there and having, uh, creating a five-mile, 10-mile bike ride, have a, you know, once in a while, what they call a tour of Dania. Once we establish our historical sites, once we establish the beach, you know, we can put together little bike rides once a month or something like that, or it depends on how popular, to let people, you know, ride around the city, show them, you know, the southeast, the southwest. People don't even know, go out west and go see this beautiful parks around the north side of Griffin Road. People don't even know this stuff exists. I've, I've been riding around lately with other people and seeing that I've been here all my life and that, you know, it was here. So my vision is to let all that stuff get out there and let people see our city. I've got a few more things, but anyhow, then, and then of course, the, the vision of fixing our infrastructure and having everything work for flooding and sewer stuff. You're definitely right, we sure don't want with, have Fort Lauderdale, all our sewer pipes breaking. Uh, I'm, I'm hoping that, and I know what, I don't think that's a vision for me or a, or a, uh, legacy for me. That's something that city, and we have, we have a great city manager and along with, uh, our city engineers stuff, to get this stuff going. It's up to us to prove it and make it work and that will come into play. And I think that's something that we're actively working on, uh, but infrastructure to prepare ourselves for all that is a priority. Thank you.
That was good. Back to the mayor, it's Emmerich.
I guess I'll start with some of the things that I've heard from my other colleagues. Definitely a destination. I think, uh, Daniel Point kinda started everything and, uh, really opened up our eyes to like the possibilities that could exist here in our small gem of a city. Um, so when I was first elected, I kept saying, "I don't want to be a pass-through city" because as the vice mayor said, people go to the airport and they, or right, they pass through. And I no longer wanted to be that. I, I think that we're slowly changing that, but I, you know, when you talk about legacy versus vision, 15 years, I have to understand, like, you know, speaking sports, Usain Bolt, you know, he trained for four years. He prepared, it took him four years to prepare for nine seconds. And so I, I don't want us to under, to underestimate, you know, the time that it really takes to get these things done. That's why you said 15 years. You put the work in now and we have to understand, same day you plant the seed is not gonna be the same day you get the fruit. And so we just have to make sure that we're planting good seeds and we're fertilizing those seeds and we're maintaining that soil so what sprouts up could be something, could be, you know, our vision, what we look back and say, "You know what? It may look a little different, but that's, that's what I wanted, that's the kind of city that I wanted." And so that's, that's number one. Um, I, I would like to have a stable and balanced economy within our city. I would like for people to be able to really live, shop, work and play here and not have to have, um, some things that we struggle with, with affordable housing and everything else is to commute. Our, our, a lot of our residents, they, they have to commute outside of our city to be able to work. I want to have high-paying jobs. I want to come back and say, "You know what? Not just for the city, in these high-paying positions and, and senior level positions, but I want to be able to have higher-paying jobs for, you know, our, our residents." And I just talked to the city manager a couple of days ago about having summer youth programs that, we used to have, a, a program called Beta, um, back when I was a young girl and, and, um, the city had a program that paid our kids who are too, too old for summer camp, but you still keep them engaged, you, you get them a, a job and, and we pay, I would rather pay that than, than give any money to charity any day of the week because you're teaching responsibility, you're teaching accountability, you're teaching a skillset, those things that we may need in the marine industry, like, we can partner, excuse me, partner with different businesses to be able to do those things and to have summer jobs for, for our kids. A lot of, a lot of times, our students don't understand the possibilities that even exist. If you just take a, a ride out to the port, those types of jobs, you don't, you don't know about that in high school, you don't know when you graduate that you could have, uh, those type of port security or screening jobs or, you know, there are, there are a ton of jobs there, a ton of opportunities there because everyone is not going to go to college. And, you know, everyone can't afford to go to college. Thankfully, my basketball skills afforded me a scholarship because of the, I wouldn't have been in college either. Um, I, I really want to see us go back to having our own police in fire. I think long-term, down the road, that is something that can be obtained. And I understand we have money that comes off of development, but we need to have a balance because if we're, we're talking about bringing in families, we have to be careful the types of things that, you know, we, we are standing behind. The one, in one breath, we do one thing and, you know, find creative ways to be able to get some of these projects done, other than just relying on what the taxes are going to bring us because we never know where the economy is gonna go. COVID showed us they could just come in and just, all of our plans be wiped out. So making sure that we become more creative. And, um, on top of everything else that I will not, um, say again and repeat from my legacy, um, I, I would like to add Dania Beach to our airport. I don't know what happened, I have to go back and figure out what happened down the road. I just think it is the most disrespectful thing that it says Fort Lauderdale, Hollywood, and it leaves Dania Beach out. I don't care if Dania Beach is just a small little pass-through, a few, a few traffic lights, that, that should, Dania Beach should not be left out of that. And I don't know how we can go back and revisit that. Um, I don't know how we can make sure that down the road, something happens, but I would like to start the small steps or the conversations to see what it would take to have that possibly happen. Because I think it does a huge disservice when they come out of the airport, the first thing you see when you are traveling south is not Hollywood, it's not Fort Lauderdale, it's Dania Beach. You see our airport sign and I just think that those are things that can really make us a destination. When you can put in a code in, in the airport and you know that you were traveling to Dania Beach. So often, how many of us have to say, "Okay, I'm really from Miami or Fort Lauderdale or a major city" because no one knows where the heck Dania Beach is. I mean, I make it point to say Dania Beach so I can start a conversation, but those people don't care anything about Dania Beach. Is it Miami? Yes, Miami. Okay, I'm coming. You know, that's, that's what we all want. And so I just want this, I, I think I've heard the theme for everyone, we just want it to be a destination, to something that we are really proud of, something that we can see for the eye, but also something that we can have stably there because we can have all the landscaping, if we don't have the stability, if we don't have businesses, if we don't have the attractions, you know, they're, they're gonna stop and take a picture and they're gonna keep going, they're gonna patronize someone else.
So, I think that, that marketing and that identity is, is very key because that happens to me too when, when I am in another state or even in another country and I talk to people, Dania Beach, and then I have to tell them, "Was that Miami?" And then all of a sudden, "Here in Miami." But, but guess what? Miami did a lot of work with Vision 21. They really did a lot in regards to creating that vision and, and that identity. And we can do it here because we have a very unique identity. So I think marketing of that, everything that we're doing now with the, the Thousand Mermaids project, Phil Self, who's staying at home, and all of us with, with social media, and I don't own social media, but I think only, we can be the, the best ambassadors for, for our city.
Can I, can I say something?
Sure. No, I need you, Lauren. Go ahead, Lauren.
Just, just one, little sort of comment. Um, and I'm with you on that. I, I would love for the airport to be, you know, Dania Beach in there as well. Um, I'd love for our zip codes out west, I'd like us all to be the same zip code because my address is Fort Lauderdale. The, uh, Commissioner Odman's is Fort Lauderdale because we're in 33312, but we live in Dania Beach and we vote in Dania Beach and, you know, we're part of the city. But there are some things, and Tom might even be able to shed some light on this, there's some things that I'm afraid we're, we're gonna be limited in as far as doing that. Like, we can't change those postal, because people have tried to do it for years, it's way too complicated.
Yeah, I tried to do it as well.
I know, I've, I've been, I tried doing it before, I was on the commission and it just, yeah, and it's, it's, there are certain things that we can't, we just can't do and I, and, and it's unfortunate. Um, and I think the, the issue with the airport and naming of the airport, wasn't there something in the interlocal agreement, do you know, Tom? I, I just, I recall there was something when the, when the negotiations were taking place. What was that?
It's a county-owned airport.
Right. So the county made the decision.
We'll come back to that one, if that's a good point.
Yeah. Because I know there was something, because that actually was Dania Beach land and we ended up ceding the land to the county, if I'm not mistaken. Right. So it's now county land. It's now county land as opposed to city land, it used to be city land. Um, you know, it's, the whole airport thing is a, it's a thorn in my side, but, um, always that's kind of why I'm here. Um, but, you know, I, I'm just, I'm just concerned about something, like, I agree with you, I wish it would say.
If we can do it, that's okay. I just want us to do everything that I.
We're gonna be out on the table, we can figure out.
Yeah, no, I just.
Let me get Lauren in here.
Absolutely.
Lauren, what are your thoughts for the vision? Any further thoughts?
Oh, she's muted. There she is.
Is it any better now? I'm on my phone.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'm gonna hop on the airport thing because I, I'm glad you brought that up. It wasn't part of my vision, but when I look at, you know, Dania Beach Vision 2036, we may not have a vision for the airport, but you can be certain that, um, that the International Airport has plans for 2036 for the airport and what it's going to look like. And one of the things I think we should think about is, you know, that many years out, so 15 years out or 20 years out, at, at what point does, are we allowed to do something or are we going to challenge it and do something if they continue to build out, let's say, more, more runways and expand out further? Uh, those, well, I was gonna say those of us who live out west, but really, a, a, all of us in Dania Beach know how destructive, um, it has been to, uh, activities of daily living and just basic quality of life. And if there was further expansion, building another airport, does it still, and we don't need to go into this now, but like, does it still mean you can't do anything because of the interlocal agreement? And at what point do we say that even though we signed that, we are gonna do something? So I, I think more thought has to go into it, not how bad it is now because we all understand our, our hands are tied now, but down the line, um, are we going to revisit that? Because I surely know that none of our vision is, uh, for a larger portion of the city to be, uh, to be affected by this more than it has. And it's, uh, it's just so unfortunate how much, uh, residents have lost, um, in terms of enjoyment of their outdoor space. Uh, beyond that, for the vision that it's really, it aligns with the things I wrote in the legacy, which is, uh, I hope to see that by 2036, uh, there's, there's been strong environmental policies put in place, um, that protect and, uh, help re-nourish the beach and the reef and extends out to the entire city as to how we look at nature and what, uh, what we get from it and what we give back to it and what we take away from it. Uh, so seeing stronger policy there and integration of it into, uh, into our economy and into the programs that we offer. And beyond that, seeing that there has been a successful development in the area of arts and culture, that we have a flourishing public arts program, that we have, uh, at some point, we've now built a theater and people are able to go enjoy the theater here. Uh, that we have established integration of, uh, arts and cultural programs into the schools through the city and that we have developed public programs as well for, for residents. And thirdly or fourthly was the neighborhood development. So I, I would like to see that, you know, like, we have the, the signs that all look the same for every neighborhood. Uh, I don't, I, I don't like that. I like, I like celebrating the differences in the neighborhoods because I, I think they each bring something so special to what is collectively our city, Dania Beach. And I, I would like to see those highlighted, uh, so that the people who live there can really, um, relish in that and, and be prideful of, of what they have that makes their little cut of land different than other places in Dania Beach. I think that's. I think that's something exciting and, and fun and wonderful about cities. Um, just to give, you know, and like, when you go New York City, I guess that's a hard comparison to make, but you have all those different neighborhoods, and while you're always excited to be in New York, each neighborhood has a, a different flavor and something it's known for and something that you look forward to seeing specifically in that neighborhood that perhaps you wouldn't see in another neighborhood. So that would be part of my, my vision, would really be development. Uh, development of not just hotels and warehouses and retail, but development of art and cultural, culture and environmentalism.
Before we break for lunch, I need help on what we brought up, so I can do some work on it. What is going to make Dania Beach a destination? I heard the beach. I heard the renaming of the airport to include you. I heard Dana Point as part of that. Uh, what other things would make you a destination?
I think we need attraction. People go to places for attraction, so I know we go to Whiskey Creek, um, you know, paddleboard and all those other things, there's no reason why we can't do it right here in our city. Um, I know that with our, we've had conversations regarding this, um, as far as vendors and being able to rent out paddleboards, or being able to get on the jet skis. I mean, we have a beautiful pier, we are one of a kind, one of very few cities that has a marina at the beach, you can park your boat and walk to the beach, um, a restaurant on the pier. And so when we do those things, like these projects with the Thousand Mermaids and everything else, just like Commissioner Dagan said, we have to make sure that we are looking good on the outside too. You know, um, so we have to have things that are, that attract people to come here. Or, I mean, it was in Hollywood, but when I was growing up, it was Six Flags Atlantis, where Oakwood Plaza now is. And I grew up going there, we used to have Grand Prix. We have to have something more than people to just shop, we have to have something people to actually do. And I don't know, I don't know how we get there, but we have to utilize the space that we have to provide more attraction to get people to come to our cities. I think that's how you become a destination, because you get them here, now you have to have something for them to do.
Right now, if we're gonna, right after lunch, we'll get right into the vision, but I wanted to write up something on the vision. Do I, she had your hand up?
Well, it was similar to what the mayor was going to say, as far as action and, and having those, and I think reiterating also with Vice Mayor Salvino said, you know, really utilizing our waterways and our, our boat spaces to really, because we are unique in that. And, um, having those activities that people can do when they come say, I'm going to Dania Beach for this. Um, you know, and, and I believe too, uh, of course, you know, I believe the beach, but having art in public places and having our, our, our beach be one of those kind of art in public places through our lifeguard towers or whatever it may be, that you're actually having something that is unique and one of a kind to our city. And like the manager said, that marketing piece, something that really continues to stand out and says that Dania Beach, we do have the see it, live it, love it. But I also think what makes us unique is that we are Broward's first city, and we need to make sure that we don't forget that as we do the see it, live it, love it, because being Broward's first city is one thing that truly, truly separates us from everybody else. And so FPL has even, uh, you know, deemed a, a program after us of, for the 35 Mules Program, because we had the first, um, uh, Florida Power and Light Energy here, right here in Dania Beach. So we need to really think about the things that make us one of a kind and unique and really market that out to, you know, the city, the world and, and everybody else, so we can continue to show why we are, you know, Broward's first city and why we're the best destination place to come to.
Any other comments on that?
Yeah, um, and I was just gonna reiterate, the marketing piece is, I think, the biggest part of it too, because we can do all these fantastic things and have, you know, have, you know, Dana Point. I, I recently saw, um, there is an advertising, uh, a, a marketing thing that's going on right now, where there, the, the people, Kimco, I guess it is, they're doing a bunch of different advertisements for the places that they have. Um, Dana Point was one of them. They also did one for Pemper Flakes, uh, uh, mall. And like, that one's okay, but it really wasn't that good, but the one for Dana Point is spectacular. I mean, I've had people actually make comments to me about it, saying that they saw us on TV, they saw Dana Point, they thought it was fantastic, whatever. But that kind of thing, not just for Dana Point, but for any attractions that we have. And it needs to get out, not just in South Florida, it needs to get out everywhere. And then this way, we have a name. And so part of the problem is, is that a lot of times we do these really good things, and then nobody hears that, unless you live here. So, I mean, Dana Point definitely is one of those things that, that has put us on the map, and it has Dana right in the name. Um, but another thing, though, that has to do with that, there are certain places in Dana Point and even certain other establishments and businesses throughout the city, which when you go to their website, it says they're in Hollywood, or it says they're in Fort Lauderdale. It doesn't even say Dania Beach. Like, that's disgusting, quite frankly. I mean, they're in Dania Beach, they need to say Dania Beach. And if they don't, that should be a problem, that should be a problem for all of us. And, you know, that would also, I don't know if there's something that we could do to like, force people to put it in their name or something, but, um, you know, maybe working with some, the different companies that are out there that, you know, name these things, the URLs or whatever, and actually have that, you know, so that they're actually in the right location. I don't know, just some thoughts on that.
We will talk about that after lunch.
You know, Laura, on this real quick, I, I just Googled Chewing to see where the headquarters are. They're actually here in Dania Beach.
Yes, oh yeah, they're in Dakota.
And that is a, a tremendous company, and I think maybe working with them and coming up with something cool, or maybe some, some cool dog selfie, I mean, I did that in our former city, that we got that big dog donated from an artist in Europe. But, yeah, I mean.
Have you been there to the public?
Yeah, I was there, and Linda was talking to me about it, and I wanted to make sure that they did say headquarters was in Dania Beach.
Yes.
Because it was having thoughts in my former city. They would say, in Adentora, and it's like, wait a minute, you're afraid to say that you're in Dania Beach?
Right.
And using, like, I don't want people to not say Dania Beach, to say that they're in Hollywood for a model, but yeah, working with public places are creating that identity.
We're a certified city for pets, right? We have been now for a year. We need to promote that.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not really a pet fan, but.
Now, these are some good ideas, and I might bring this into focus. Marco, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I just wanna say something real quick, you know, uh, coming off what the mayor said and, and Commissioner Long, I guess all of you, you know, maybe we should, everybody should write down in the next few weeks and, and come back with ideas of the waterway attractions or beach attractions or city attractions. Huh? Do I?
We already have a lot of.
We got this already drafted in another.
No.
Okay, well, that's.
Prior to, we were, we discussed a lot of these things, the things are, we need to start making them happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I was gonna come in to, to nuke.
I don't wanna get into how to make them happen right now. I wanna go to the 15,000 foot, and what do we want? Don't worry about how to get there at this point. We will get there in the actions for the next year. But I think too many times we can get into the action without looking at the outcome we're trying to achieve here. So we'll break for lunch, maybe 15, 20 minutes, then come back. And I, and a lot of these ideas, Marco, have already been drafted or in here, we can add to it, and I'm gonna have you focus what's most important. But let me give you a quick example, and give you two quick ones, where vision has guided. In Round Rock, Texas, they were always linked to Austin, the sports complexes in Austin. Well, they went to the state legislature, and folks said, oh, it never happened. Today, they are recognized and have trademarked Round Rock, Texas Amateur Sports Capital, and it's been approved by the state legislature. And they have built a complex, and it spun off into a destination with Kalahari, which is a major resort, there's no Great Wolf Lodge, it's on steroids. They made it happen. Virginia Beach, we wanna be a year-round resort. When I started working with them, it was June, and maybe first week in September. Today, they've done a number of things to make it year-round. So the discussion you just had is really critical to say, here's where we wanna go, and then by the end, we'll have, what are we gonna do this year? If that's important to you, what are we gonna do? And what's, and it's recognized, some of this is gonna take a while. You gotta plant the seed, and then cultivate it, and then it will be a reality. I have drafted a vision statement. I would suggest we take a break, eat lunch, maybe 20 minutes, or when we get done, we're shooting for that. And then I wanna come back on the drafted vision. And it is, can be found in Section 7. And I wanna go page by page on this. And when we get done in an hour or so, we will have a framework of what does it mean with specifics? So that's our next step, and then we'll go to the mission and then to the plan, that's our afternoon. Okay, 20 minutes for lunch? That's good? Uh, going to page, or Section 7, this is a working draft vision, a working draft vision. One of the, this is, it would be a vision is a set of principles that define your city's future. It reflects a combination of your assets, your dreams, and it's reflected in a set of principles that have definition. One of the things that I heard is hometown feeling. Do any of you remember? Yeah, I see some heads nodding. What is I hear? Let's look on pages four and five. I'm gonna go through these, see if any you would change, and I'm gonna have you pick out of here the top seven that you feel best captures for you.
How many are there? Twenty?
There's 20.
Okay. How many do you want us to check?
Uh, actually, there's 23. They're on pages four, five, and six. Let me go through them with you, and you can change and add to it. What does this mean? In 15 years, we've maintained and enhanced property and home values. In 15 years, it's a preferred place for families and individuals to live in Broward County area. A community that you call home. It's preserved and celebrating your history. Low density with single-family homes, townhomes to mid-rise residential mixed-use buildings, eight to 10 stories. In 15 years, preserved and enhanced the reasons that residents make the choice to make, uh, Dania Beach their home. Uh, strong zoning and code enforcement to protect community, the neighborhoods, and property values. Did we mention that earlier? Uh, superior city services that are responsive to our community and neighborhoods and add value to the community and the life of our neighbors. Distinctive entrance signs and awayfinding signage. An inclusive community with diverse cultures and families of all kinds. These, these individual, uh, comments are things that you brought up to me in my interview, so some of these should look familiar to some of you. Preservation of our residential character. Convenience, no need to leave Dania Beach to shop, to work, to live, or to enjoy life. Top-quality schools and education programs. Working in partnership, the word, with the city, which someone you talked about earlier. Um, residents taking pride in contributing to our community. Strong community events and festivals that bring our residents together. Strong community organizations and institutions partnering with the city and each other to better serve your community. Lifecycle housing, a family housing that means housing opportunities for all generations. Gathering places for neighbors to meet neighbors. Strong community organizations and institutions working collaboratively. There'd be an opportunity, maybe collapse 16 and, and 19, but those were individual comments. Strong partnership with the schools and the developing of joint schools and park programs. And parks as well, that's a little different version than the education. That is where you partner to build, uh, school, but then there's a park there, and park programs in schools, recreation programs. The city is responsive to community and residents. Uh, you're recognized and marketed as Broward's first city, and you've upgraded and preserved historic buildings. What other things does a hometown mean for you? Any additions here, before I have you pick? Any additions or changes? I know it's, George, you're combining 19 and 16, are you okay with that?
Yeah, it's similar.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's, there's a couple that are duplicative.
I didn't see anything that tied into like, parking and recreation and.
We have a whole, uh, principle on parks and recreation.
Okay.
And this is one of many. So we have our parks and leisure opportunities for all, and I added some other things based upon your comments. This is just that hometown feeling.
Does that mean a different issue as well?
Yes, that's, uh, coming up in, uh, three.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, they are. Hometown feeling, world-class beach, our unique beauty, our personal safety, our neighborhoods, activity centers created with a sense of place, the thriving economy, and our leisure and recreation opportunities for all. Those are the things that I heard from them.
Laura, can you hear me?
I know you've been.
Yeah, Laura, right?
So I was just going to say, you know, that hometown feel comes up a lot, and, you know, you have residents that will say very frequently, I just want, I just want it to remain my, my small hometown. We've all heard some version of that sentence. I think it's important, if you're going to work on that as a goal, to include in, in that the acknowledgement that it's not a small town, and it hasn't been a small town for a very, very long time. That small towns do not exist directly next to Maker Thoroughfares and, um, international, expanding International Airport. And I think the reason that's important is because then you can better navigate what things will be impactful in spite of that, because there's plenty of things that will be impactful in spite of that. But sometimes you'll hear that, um, used as a reason for like, why they don't want traffic. Um, we just, we want it to be a small town with no traffic. Well, that's not, probably not feasible. But we want it to be like a small town where everybody knows each other, that's feasible, that's doable. So I think you have to acknowledge creating or maintaining, however you wanna look at it, a small town feel in spite of, um, or juxtaposed right next to the, the goals that we have that are more in line with a, a major, a growing major city. So how to accomplish two things that can, I believe, be done together, but sometimes appear to be in conflict with people.
Do you wanna add anything?
Do I wanna add anything? No, I just, I wanted to, I wanted to make that point that I think is important if we're gonna discuss hometown feel.
Yeah, I did not use the word small town for the exact reasons you just said.
Well, but do you understand what I'm saying with the, I mean, that's something we, we have all heard frequently, that I wanna keep my, my little town, my small town, whatever. That desire.
Any other comments here?
Well, I was just gonna say, uh, for me, and I think, I think we probably could all agree on this, is that a, a hometown feel has more to do with people than it does with buildings.
Absolutely.
I mean, you can, you can build, you know, 20-story buildings, and as long as you still have the people that are engaged with each other and know each other, and you go to Publix and you run into your neighbors, you still have that hometown, you still have that small town feel.
Would you wanna add something, Laurie, or?
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
You have that with the neighbors meeting neighbors.
Yeah.
But I also wanna reiterate, I think it does have something to do sometimes with buildings and developments, because. But I also want to reiterate, I think it does have something to do sometimes with buildings and developments because a lot of the individuals or the, the people, like it, it transitions and it changes because the area changes so much or diversifies or gentrifies or whatever you want to call it. Some, some places or some areas don't look the same anymore, and you don't get the community, the family feeling. Like, you know, I know we approved a project that is like a, I don't know, by Saratoga, maybe Saratoga Three, that had all one, you, one, one-bedroom units. But that's not getting us community, it's not, we're not promoting or inviting families to come in a one-bedroom unit. You know, like, we have to look at the type of city or the type of hometown feeling that we want to be. Because if we approve that, which we've already approved, look at the type of people that are going to come. It's not, it's not going to be families that are coming to invest here and just stay here long. I, I think from my vision, I, I want to be able to have people stay here, like, we've been here 30 years, or 40 years, or 15 years, or whatever it is, to be able to make sure we're staying in these cities, not just, I'm going to come here for right now, a year, until I get my stuff together, and then I'm going to move out somewhere else. I also want to have that balance to be able to provide, um, homeownership and just an anchor for families to be able to pass something down from generation to generation.
Maybe adding us number 24, neighbors knowing and helping neighbors. That gets at the relation you talked about.
Repeat that?
Neighbors helping, knowing and helping neighbors. That relationship that you guys were just talking about.
So what number?
Number 24, add it.
All right, I thought that was on there somewhere.
There's similar ones, but that one was...
Below them are similar.
Give me the eight here.
Have on there already, community gatherings for people, for neighbors to meet neighbors. I, I could repeat them.
Give me the eight, and I'll, then I'll have you read off the numbers that best captures hometown feeling for you.
Oh.
Sir, uh, put a check or a circle, give me, and then read off your numbers when you got them. If you got them, fire away.
All right, I have two, seven, 10, 12, 13, 17, and 18, and 21.
Got it.
He said it's eight.
Eight. That are most important for you. Because again, this will be a first draft. I, I go with the majority. And give me a thumbs up, Lauren, when you're ready with your numbers.
Could I, I'm sorry, could, could you repeat yours again for me, please?
I have two, seven, 10, 12, 13, 17, 18, and 21.
Thank you.
What, what numbers am I supposed to be calling out?
The nu, uh, the eight that you feel are most important for number principle one.
I don't have 24. I, I see the 15 of them.
24 was neighbors knowing and helping neighbors.
Yes. I, I don't have that on my page. I don't have your, the same thing.
It's a write-in.
It's a write-in, Commissioner.
One to add in.
I agree. Go forward.
You mean you agree? You have to, you have to say your eight.
Eight.
Eight. I have my eight. Your eight priorities for those three pages. It doesn't, you don't have to write number 24.
I have the same pages though. Well, on, on my page, it says top 15 priorities for 2021. You want me to name eight of those, I like?
We're in section seven, pages four, five, and six.
Go to page four, go to page four, five, and six on section seven.
All right, I see principles one and two are hometown feeling.
Yes.
That's what we were just reviewing.
Now, choose eight of those as your priorities. We did write in an additional one on page six for number 24 that says, and you have to write in, neighbors knowing and helping neighbors. So within those three pages, choose your eight, and then you're going to tell Lyle the numbers that you chose.
So.
I have mine.
Fire away, Lori.
One, two, seven, 12, 14, 18, 23, and 24.
I lost you 12.
Huh?
I lost you 12.
14, 18, 23, and 24.
What are yours, Marco?
I have my eight.
Are you ready, Lyle?
I'm going to have Joyce, and then I'll call yours.
Okay.
Three, four, 10, 12.
Slow down, slow down.
Three, four, three, four.
I'll give you the tally, so don't, you need, you don't need to...
Okay.
Go fire away. What after?
10. 10, 12, 13, 14, 16, 18.
Got it. Lauren, you got yours?
Yes, she does.
Okay. Seven, eight, nine, 10, 12, 15, 17, 18.
Yeah, slow down.
Ma'am, no ma'am. Seven, eight, nine, 10.
And then on the next page?
12.
Yeah?
15.
What?
15.
15.
No, she, okay.
15, strong community events and festivals that bring residents together. What's how much 15?
15.
She said 15.
One, five.
Yes.
Yes, keep going.
Yep, 17 and 18.
Got it. Marco?
I only, I only have four so far.
He's not ready yet.
I'm so busy, I'm, I'm busy listening to everybody else.
That's, I, I would like to have you do these individually and not write down others, because if you go last, you can...
Yeah, but that's not fair. I'm looking at what they're picking. Try to possibly work together as a team. And I, if, if I am separating my thoughts, I might work as a team more than picking my own individual.
I'm interested in your individual, and I go with three votes, so.
Yeah, he, he's...
My individual thoughts, I think every one of them are great ideas.
All right, which are the eight most important?
I'm getting there.
Okay.
I'll be done, give me, give me 60 seconds, please.
Siri, got a timer for 60 seconds?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. One more, I got to pick one more, okay?
Okay.
Okay, I got mine.
What are they?
Uh, two, seven, eight, 12, 13, 15, 19, and 21.
Each give me one more, a ninth choice that you did not vote for last time. So one more.
15.
And then what, what is yours?
15.
15?
I'll take 18.
18, thank you. Lauren, you got yours?
16.
16?
Yes.
I'll say 15.
I like 20.
Your big winners here from the majority vote are number two is preferred place for families and individuals to live. Number seven, strong zoning and code enforcement to protect the community, neighborhood, and property values. Number 10, an inclusive community with diverse cultures and families of all kinds. Number 12, convenience. Uh, 13, top-quality schools and education programs working in partnership with the city. Uh, 15, strong community events, festivals that bring neighbors together. And number 18 is community gathering places for neighbors to meet neighbors. So those are what's most important to the five of you. Go to the world-class beach on pages seven and eight. What I heard in my interviews were dude's systems restored and in place, pier with amenities, convenient access and parking for residents and tourists, quality sand with a wide beach, uh, restaurant or restaurants plural to enjoy the beach. There are a variety of limited, the T-word was limited, commercial activities and experiences. A unique, a natural, uh, beach, unique in South Florida, our community jewel. Close access to the beach. A sense of place, a place to relax, and that should be escape from urban life. Small-scale community events and festivals could be there. Marina with day docks and a safe beach with lifeguard service. Any other things you would add here?
I would add BSO or Navy Rangers to, not with lifeguard service.
You want to add that to number 12, or you want to make it separate, Joyce?
We can add it to number 12, I think. Can I add video cameras too?
And we're adding, what would you want to add?
Like security camera?
Security cameras, surveillance cameras.
Safety. I'd like video cameras, like we have a pier. I'd like to have cameras for people to see the beach. Right.
Beach.
Well, just, Walt should put it on the safety.
Put it on your safety.
We'll add the cameras to number 12 then.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other things you want to see at the beach?
What, what about like underwater cameras and like...
What's that? That is number 13. The underwater cameras, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
It's not just having them, but showcasing our beach and waterways.
For marketing purposes, right. You know, put slash, put dash.
Like they have eagle cams in a lot of places. You can have underwater cam.
I mean, I think you could do a combination. I mean, we have one for the pier. It'd be nice to have one for the whole beach as well as one for underwater.
Just put enhanced security and camera system.
Well, I think they're two different functions. One is the marketing part.
Or mar, or marketing.
This would be like if you could go on your website and see the live cams of it. You could have its own site.
It would be really awesome, and I don't think that this is, I don't, I don't know if this is doable or not, but to really have a camera where we're going to put those reefs, like, that would be amazing.
Fill it right into it.
Yeah.
So the, with the cameras, the sculptures, and where the yard's going to go, it's a little far out, because it's a mile.
Yeah.
And then the other issue is we're looking into cameras near the pier, where people cannot swim near the pier. So we'll only capture the environment, the fish.
That's fine.
But, but I know you mentioned about people swimming by, but, but we have done a lot of the research for the cameras to go on the pier, and we did look into the sculptures, but again, a mile out, it would require a cable, an after fiber after cable, and that's going to be a little bit expensive.
And again, I don't want to worry about how, we're out 15 years in, what do we want to see?
That's fine, but I, I could, to, to go back to what, um, our assistant city manager was saying. Even if it just got, you know, for fishermen, they could see, oh my gosh, there are a lot of fish here.
Yes.
Or the environment that is surrounded. We can see if there's a lot of trash in our ocean. We could do an underwater cleanup or something like that. I just think that, you know, your Dania Beach needs to really showcase...
And that would make it unique. And again, today, and not right now, don't worry about how to get there. This is saying what you want. So we'll have the underwater cameras for marketing our community and for public enjoyment.
One more.
Yes, Joyce, number 14 is?
I would love to see, uh, the lifeguard towers used as art in public places like they do, um, that would market our lifeguard towers like they do in Miami Beach. That's what markets, the fact that we're Broward's first city. See it, live it, love it, and you have to bring in the sea to it. So I really just would love to see one day that we have lifeguard towers in our, you know, in our, in our city logo colors and bright and beautiful and really bring and draw...
So it's lifeguard towers as public art, is that what I heard?
Yeah.
Add that as number 14.
Look, what, can I, can I, excuse me, can I get you to, to use the whole beach as a canvas for art?
Yes, that would be awesome.
So the whole beach is a canvas for art, because that way we can work with a quarterback, with a U, with the pier.
So I'll put both, beach and lifeguard towers, so we cover both.
Oh, what, what is the proper...
It's the li, lifeguard, beach and lifeguard towers as a public art canvas.
Yeah, the whole thing could be. And it's, it's, because everything that we do is making it a part of art.
And, and it makes it unique too.
Yeah.
You go, wow, that's cool.
We're going to that beach.
Any others here? We've added, we modified 12 to include the community, it's the surveillance cameras. 13 is the underwater cameras, and 14 is the beach and lifeguard as public art nap.
I like, I like to add one.
Sure.
Um, you know, within my traveling, I think, I, I may have brought this up when, um, when Vice Mayor was, uh, on the commission before, but I would like to see more visionary-type things as we see over in other countries. So in traveling and home basketball, and always going to the beaches there, you can literally go and just sit. They have, I, I know it's a challenge with our lack of beach, but they have places that you can just sit, and you have people come up, and they will come, and you will pay for where you're sitting at. Then you would have the restaurant come and give you a menu, and they have a section of the beach, not the entire beach, where you can have alcoholic beverage or, or be served something, because they're bringing alcohol to our beaches, whether we like it or not. There is no way to enforce that. I'm scared, because I see people bring the coolers with, they, they don't even care that we're there. You can have on your shirt, and they'll just drink it right next to you and have a whole conversation. So why not capitalize off of that?
I agree.
Why not be a place that when you could just go and sit out? They would literally bring you the table. You order food, they'll come bring you the table.
And it's a good...
You liked that idea, didn't you, Mayor?
Oh, they do.
You liked that idea, didn't you?
I, I mean, I, I, I love going to the beach, because you didn't have to worry about packing stuff.
That's what I say, Mayor.
Everything that...
Full service. Ocean City, Maryland, that's exactly Tamara when you're talking.
It's some, some of our cities that...
All you need is an iCole, and you can order from three different places and different types of...
Correct.
And they bring it to you.
Including who you pay for.
You can sit there, yeah.
So delivery service for...
Service on the beach.
I know that we, we, we approached the quarterback, and they kind of said that they didn't have the capacity in their kitchen to accommodate, something like that, but if we're going to redo the beach...
This is, and this is important, then it ought to be incorporated in that review, that that type of service could be provided.
Because you have to go with it, so the answer is, I mean, where else are you going to find it? If you could just go sit on the beach, and somebody's going to come and cater to you. And they have a whole credit card, really, they're really popular here. You don't have to worry about somebody going to take your credit card and run it off. They did a transaction right there in front of you. I just think that...
Naples, they do that too, if we...
Where?
We just do it in Naples. You can just order it from the menu on the phone, and they just bring it, it's similar to a quarterback at the beach in proximity, and, and a waiter will just come down and bring it to you. There's not, never a transaction, because everything is done through the app.
Oh, yeah, because technology...
Add that as number 15, is that basically full service on the beach.
Lyle, let me tell you, we can even include that in our RFP.
That is correct. If that's part of this vision, then it ought to be in your RFP.
More restaurants and operators will be more interesting, so that's good that you brought that up. Yeah, I mean, we brought it up, but it didn't pass the last time, the question, but I...
Let's see what it does today, because it can be given guidance to the RFP too. Any others that you want to add?
Yeah.
Lauren, any others you would add on the world-class beach?
No.
Lyle, so, so did they, did they want just food and beverage service, or like umbrella? Full service.
I said full service.
Cool, okay, full service.
Campanas, cheer, the... That is correct.
That is correct.
I had full service here.
Okay.
Including food and drink.
If you want to just go there right now.
Any others? I've got fifteen here, right?
Yep.
Give me the seven here that are most important for you. Lauren, give me a thumbs up when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Fire away.
Fifteen, fourteen, thirteen.
Fifteen, fourteen, thirteen.
Ten, five, three, two.
Ten and then what?
Ten, five, three, two.
Ten, five, three, two.
Got it. Now seven. My head only goes to seven though, Tamara.
Huh?
It cramps up a bit.
Oh, can I take one off?
Uh, hold it in advance in case I need a tiebreaker. So give me seven to start with and then circle the one that you would say is your type, is, is your number. That's there. We're doing seven.
I'm sorry.
Marco, that's okay. Out of the fifteen, did you get fifteen, that full service?
Do you want me to pick seven out of here?
Yep.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Tamara, you ready?
Yep.
Fire away.
One, two, four, five, six. Thirteen and fifteen.
Got it.
I'm, I'm sorry, my, me stepping up a minute. I don't have thirteen, fourteen, fifteen down.
Thirteen is the underwater cameras, Marco. And that would be used for both marketing and for public enjoyment. Two is the beach.
Where are those being located?
They're on page, uh, eight.
Now, where are they located, the cameras that they're?
We haven't decided that yet. These are just.
All the underwater.
We're not worrying about how, we're just looking at.
Okay, go ahead.
Number fifteen is the beach and lifeguard towers as a public art canvas. That they're unique and attractive and pieces of art.
What was fourteen?
Fourteen is beach and lif- lifeguard towers as public art.
I thought that was fifteen.
Fifteen is beach with full service. You show up there, you can get what you want.
And how many you want? Eight?
Seven.
Hey, listen, I had to go to the bathroom, okay?
Sorry.
I'm ready.
Fire away, Lori.
One, two, three, five. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Fire away, Joyce. Marco, he's ready to go.
I'm ready to go, but I had something I just, uh, uh. There was some part, there was some, at one point in time, the wires, there was talk about having the wires grounded so that they are not across the entire.
We're still, we're still.
Is that, is that still something that is being worked on, not being worked on?
I thought it was still being worked on. Um.
City manager?
Burying the F P N L wires. That was something that we have been working on with, um, F P N L for a while on the beach. We had a whole plan for it. I don't know, probably, I don't, I don't know where it is in the process, but.
That, that hasn't stopped in regards to working with them and incorporating that in the RFP and in the. That would definitely enhance.
Well, that's nothing that F P N L has to do though. It has nothing to do with like the developers. F P N L is supposed to bury the wires. I'm not sure where we are in it, but that was something that was in the process. I know Colin.
Listen, I was gonna say, let's talk about.
No, I know, I know that there was, it's done in phases and first, because there's, there's other wires out there that are not just F P L. So I know that in order to start, we needed, uh, one of the, one of the big, uh, companies to remove theirs. And that they were gonna be trimmed, that the wood, the poles were gonna be cut in order to have light. But that is still in the process and, and it's gonna be, we, we have to speed it up because of the whole, uh, Army Corps of Engineer, later at the end of this year, they're gonna have to go through there and open everything up. So definitely I'll, I'll be able to provide the manager a follow-up, where we at now and what's the next step.
Thank you. I did, I needed to.
You have yours now?
Yes, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna do, uh, three, five.
Three, five.
Seven.
Seven.
Ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen.
You have yours, Marco?
I'm ready.
Fire away.
Uh, one, two, three, four, five. Uh, thirteen and fifteen.
This is clear. The, your vision for the future is.
Crystal.
Uh, it is very clear. Uh, you'll see this combined a little bit. It's one, two, three, five. So it's the dunes, it's the pier, it's the convenient access and parking, it's the quality restaurants. And four is close and I think we can combine that into, uh, number one. So it's the beach and dunes together. And then the underwater cameras, thirteen. The beach and, uh, lifeguard towers as art canvas. Fourteen and with all five of you, beach with full service. So that ought to be built into any RFP out there.
I have a question.
Fire away.
You know, one of the concerns that I have here, and I know I probably have asked this question multiple times, never get a straight answer, and this probably is gonna go to Hannah to work with us on this. And maybe the commissioner already knows. I know Tamara was involved, that Lori was involved when they were the mayors prior to my life, when we started back before our beach erosion, where we start talking about our dune restore and our quality of sand to make a wider beach. Every time we put sand on the beach, within a month, we have a nor'easter and it goes away. Uh, is there anything that, uh, the state is gonna be able, or the government's gonna be able to do to provide us some type of a resource? Do they make a resource? Is there anything to do to keep that from rescinding the beach back? Because I know we can't do the, we can't stuff any more holes out there. We have to keep shipping stuff in, but as soon as we put in, it seems like it's gone.
Actually, there's two projects coming, one in the spring and, and one in the fall with greater impact, working with the Army Corps of Engineer. Can you, can we send, uh, the latest?
Is it about the digging?
Plan section, in section ten.
Okay.
So what I'm thinking of that is that those projects are in here.
Well, send me the details of both projects.
Okay, yep, because I, I, I'm fine. And I, I won't drag you out much longer. I just wanted to say that I do remember us talking about, uh, there was supposed to be some kind of a.
It's supposed to be a project. Yes.
Sand out.
Correct.
And then for, for, once America stopped and everything else.
Yes.
Those are both in the five-year, one-year plan.
Okay, I, I'll wait till you get to number ten, but I just wanted to bring it up because I noticed that we all voted for it. That's, it would be nice to make sure we don't constantly keep putting.
Again, this is a working document. And so I think by modifying is to have a quality, wide sandy beach with dune systems restored and in place is really what you're talking about. Then when you combine those, does that make sense?
Yeah, 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 it is. But you know what's so funny is when I grew up and, and I know, I have pictures of me as a little kid, you know, on the beach. The beach was, was a hundred yards wide. I just can't imagine what happened to it after all these years. Where'd it go?
What happened was they built the jetty.
The jetty, the jetty keeps the natural flow from moving down, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That's been the problem.
If you go to Virginia Beach, there's a place called Sand Bridge. It didn't exist in the forties. It existed in the seventies and now it's going away and you've got multi-million. Ten-dollar homes as a city protective, so let it go back to its natural state. That's a policy issue for them, so. Moving sand is a big issue on the East Coast or every coastal from Hilton Head on that I work with.
And every city wants to have the best beach. And so you end up having these competing interests and so, you know, they built the jetty up, you know, out there to help Fort Lauderdale's beach, but it messed with everything south. So, you know, I mean, it's just, it's just part of, it's part of it, unfortunately.
Then you get into challenges of the quality of the sand, the type of sand.
Yep.
As well as who pays for it, which could be very in this cycle.
Right.
Let's go to unique beauty. Many of you brought that up even a few minutes ago this morning. What does this mean on pages nine and ten? Public art throughout the community and in public spaces. Uh, attractive, uh, streetscapes along major corridors. And I put including the, the coconut trees along U S one. Uh, three is attractive signage, distinctive entrance signs that are really well maintained. Uh, well-designed, well-maintained landscaping, both public and private. Well-designed, well-maintained city infrastructure and facilities. So we said, if we're not taking care of our places, how can we expect others to be attractive? Older buildings and meeting city property maintenance code should be. Uh, public green spaces throughout the community. Tree canopy with attractive landscaping. Clean, no trash or litter, uh, including along the railroad tracks. Attractive and, uh, public and community gathering places that are personally inviting for our residents. And alive arts districts. Uh, murals in specific areas of our city. The Thousand Mermaids venue. Place. No. No, this isn't new.
It's pretty much as ideal.
But is it done?
It's already been approved.
Yeah, but you want to see it in fifteen years?
Like what she's saying, we, they don't want to, they don't want, they want an opportunity to make sure that things that are already not approved are in the pipeline.
But that, this is not looking, this is saying the outcomes you want to see. Don't just take for granted that it's gonna be there in fifteen years. And we're not looking at actions yet. That's a very clear question. Can, can you making sure that it's maintained during that fifteen years and is really viable?
Can, oh, sorry, can we amend? Can we amend eleven to the arts and theater district or does that have to be a separate thing?
Theater, uh, theater is coming up under a different, uh, principle.
Okay.
Number fifteen, uh, that was brought up, was clean, clean streets. You talked about street cleaning, I believe, Marco, this morning, right?
Yeah, I thought I saw that here doing.
Fourteen, I need is street cleaning.
Well, isn't that a pretty clean community type of thing?
You want me to including street, uh, street cleaning, to include that in nine?
Which two?
Now, the one that you said about clean streets and clean.
Because you talked about street cleaning. You wanted to include it as part of number nine or separate?
Same.
Pardon me?
Same is fine. I think when we're gonna keep it clean, we're gonna keep it clean.
Including street cleaning. Sure.
Sorry. A lot of times we run into issues because different agencies are, um, responsible for the certain sections of the streets. Like maybe F D O T with certain ones or the F E C with the railroad. Is there any way that we can kind of combine like either taking it over or signing some type of an agreement or enforcing and making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do? Because we complain all the time and the staff ends up sending our public services out, but there's, there's no, F D O T just doesn't do the job. So I don't know how to include that in there.
Uh, I just put it here and I just noted this, make sure it's an action coming up.
Our city manager should be able to contact F D O T and like you just said, and, uh, and the railroad, that they don't want to keep it clean, that we're gonna send them a bill for it.
Holding all agencies in your city accountable for their responsibilities.
So clean streets slash accountability?
Yes.
And in all jurisdictions is what I put as well.
We do, we do that, we do that on houses that need to be.
And, and also partnerships. I mean, you can, you can develop partnerships with the county and the, and the F D O T and whatnot. Like have, like, like, you know, you have, um, agreements all the time. Like we maintain certain places even though it's owned by somebody else.
We have them. They just not doing their part.
No, but, but the thing is, but if there, if we are for the responsibility of like, for example, this one, that's a big one. Um, it's in our city, that's true. But if we're maintaining it and we have an agreement with the state or whomever, uh, the county, whoever it is, um, to, to, like, we're, that we're doing certain things, like, and then they just fund us for it or something.
Well, that's what we're saying. Either they're gonna do it, or we can do it, but they have to pay us to do it.
Right. But that's what I'm saying, getting together and agreeing.
This is what you want, then we'll get into how to make that happen.
Right.
But I've got street cleaning added to number nine, uh, with accountability, it's, uh, you talked about. And that includes all jurisdictions that have responsibility for streets. Any others that you would add here?
I've combined, no.
You, what do you want to do? Uh, let's do it, take them one at a time.
One, eleven and twelve should be one item.
What is the item?
Um, public arts throughout the community that ties into an alive arts district and mural. I don't, because I, I don't waste it all in my thoughts.
You reduce the number you're gonna choose.
How many are we picking from this one?
So we will combine eleven and twelve with one. Okay, any others, additions or changes? Give me six that are most important for you.
Six?
Six.
Come on, you just combined three.
You said seven.
That's right.
I love it, I love it. They won't.
Okay, never mind because we, because we don't have fourteen anymore, right?
We only got, uh, eleven right now on my list.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm done then. Want me to go?
Yep.
All right. One, three, four, nine, ten. Thirteen, which is listed on the list.
Yep.
Okay, I have mine.
Fire away, Lauren.
Thirteen, eleven.
We don't have an eleven.
Eleven was combined with one.
Okay, so thirteen, one. Seven, five, four.
We have a twelve. Twelve was combined with one.
Okay, and two.
Okay.
I didn't hear all of them.
I didn't hear all of them either.
You got one more.
All right, am I, uh, did I say nine yet?
No.
Okay, nine.
Okay.
Which one?
Nine.
Nine?
Nine.
What?
The six, we didn't get one for six. Could you repeat it again? Yeah, have her repeat.
Don't worry about others. Just worry about your own.
That's right, worry about your own.
Yes, that is right. We've got yours.
Eyes on your own.
Ready, Joyce?
Yeah.
Fire away.
No, I think you can combine four and eight, but okay. Number one, three.
One.
One, three.
Three.
Four. Four.
Four.
Seven.
Seven.
Nine.
Nine. And thirteen.
Ready.
Lauren.
Me?
Lauren.
I was like, what? Uh, one, two.
Two. Two.
Five.
Five.
Seven.
Seven.
Nine.
Nine.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. You let me repeat them and then you can do whatever you want. Got yours Marco?
I've got one left on.
Okay.
You know, I, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Uh, number two and four, don't they kind of work together?
Uh, two and four are a little different because, uh, this would be necessarily off as the main or your corridors. And it would include private buildings as well as public buildings and infrastructure. There's landscaping around those.
Bouncing back and forth, okay. Well, I can tell you that, uh, number one.
One.
I need to skip that two and four for a second. Number nine.
Nine.
Ten.
Ten.
Number thirteen.
What was the last one?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
How many I got left?
Two.
How many? Two?
Two.
Kill me on this. Alright, I, I got the one I'm splitting back and forth. Uh, I'm gonna go at two.
Two.
And. I don't know, I guess I'll go ahead and go with five.
Five?
Yeah, I, I'm trying, I wanted to do it a different way, but.
Alright, I need a tiebreaker folks. Between three and five. Give me one of those. Three or five. Which is most important?
I'll take three.
Three I heard.
I like five.
I got a five.
Five.
Three.
No, I said five.
Five. I must have said five.
Who said that?
Lauren said five.
Lauren said five.
So Marco?
Marco, I'm five. I didn't have five before.
No, you did.
Three and five, you just choose a between those.
Okay, well, I had five circles, so it must have been one of my choices before I looked the other way, so.
I guess it's.
I'll go five.
Five. The big winners here are one, the, uh, public art that includes an alive, uh, arts district and murals. Uh, number two, the attractive streetscapes along the major corridors. Number four, the attractive landscaping, both public and private. Uh, five is a well-designed, well-maintained city infrastructure. Number seven is public, uh, green spaces throughout the community. Clean community that would include street sweeping with accountability for all jurisdictions. And number thirteen, those are your key ones here. Going to the next, which is personal safety.
Can we choose 10?
What?
Can we choose all?
We're going to focus the ones that are most important. That this means low crime rate, neighbors feeling safe and secure. Visible police presence throughout the community. Timely response to emergency calls for service. Active community policing. Police know and collaborating with the community. Safe homes and buildings. Protection from outside criminal influences.
Expand on that please.
Uh, outside folks coming to your community to commit criminal activity.
Got you.
Uh, and that can take a variety of forms from everything from license plate readers to community cameras to visible patrol. So a number of things to protect. Residents sharing responsibility for creating a safe community. Effective use of technology to prevent and to respond to criminal activity. You all talked about potential drones, community cameras, license plate readers, speed trailers. Community's reputation as tough on crime. Sheriff deputies knowing the community and residents. Uh, new public safety, uh, facility for law enforcement and fire. Uh, safe sidewalks that are well-designed and well-maintained. Safe waterways throughout our community. Adequate staffing for law enforcement and fire. New developments designed for safety. Adequate lighting throughout the community. And deputies out of their cars building relationships with our businesses and our residents.
You're right Mayor, this, this should all be.
Eleven and eighteen and in fact, uh, what's the other one?
What?
Five, eleven and eighteen are kind of the same.
Eleven and eighteen?
Five, eleven and eighteen.
Five, eleven and eighteen are all kind of the same thing.
Which one's best?
I mean, definitely eighteen and five are the same.
So we ought to build, include eighteen in one or in five, right?
Five.
Yeah.
And you want to include 11 and five as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we don't have an eighteen and we don't have a five.
Right.
We now have five. We don't have, which one?
Eleven and eighteen have gone away and it's, they're going to be incorporated in five.
Got it.
How many did we pick this one?
Any other changes or additions? Any others? Give me the eight that are most important for you.
I have my eight.
Fire away.
One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Four.
Four.
Six. Seven.
Is it six and then seven?
Six, seven. Eight.
Eight.
Yeah. Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Seventeen.
And seventeen. Thank you.
Those are seven?
Eight.
Eight.
What was, what was, was six in there?
Yeah, she said six.
Okay, I didn't hear the six.
I'm ready.
Fire away Lauren.
One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Four.
Four.
Five.
Five.
Six.
Six.
Seven.
Seven.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Seventeen.
And seventeen.
You ready?
Fire away Joyce.
One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Five.
Five.
Six.
Six.
Nine.
Nine.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Seventeen.
And seventeen.
Alright, I have my eight.
Fire away.
One.
One.
Three.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Five.
Five.
Eight.
Eight.
Nine.
Nine.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Alright, vice mayor.
I'm trying. Three, four, five. How many I gotta have? Eight?
Eight.
I have a question. Oh, nevermind. I, I, I guess that would be brought up, a new public safety.
Facility.
Facility. I thought that was already under the works too.
It got, it died with the, um, city center project.
Alright, I'm gonna give you my best here.
Alright, fire away.
One.
One, two.
Two.
Four.
Four.
Six.
Six.
Eight.
Eight.
Nine.
Nine.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
And seventeen.
Seventeen.
The big winners here are one, low crime rate. Two, neighbors feeling safe and secure. Four, timely response to emergency calls. Five, active community policing program. That includes, uh, deputies knowing, uh, the community and residents and out of their cars building relationships. Uh, number six, safe homes and buildings. Eight, residents sharing responsibility for creating a safe community. Nine, effective use of technology to prevent and respond to criminal activity. Number fifteen is adequate staffing for law enforcement and fire. And number seventeen is adequate lighting throughout the community. So that is your focus for, uh, safety. Ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
These are your vibrant centers, activity centers that create a sense of place. Uh, and there's several up there that you've talked to me about. Uh, and that would be places for, that could be downtown, could be, uh, Indian Point, it could be others, but they're activity centers, multiple ones. Community place for events, festivals, and to just hang out. Range of entertainment businesses with a variety of activities. Small-scale retail businesses serving the needs of the community as well as the adjacent communities. Residents going, uh, to activity centers rather than other destinations in the county. That is staying home here to shop and to experience. That these ought to be attractive, well landscaped and well-maintained activity centers. They ought to be walkable and pedestrian-friendly. Uh, often family generations feeling welcome. Convenient access and parking. Many of you talked about the opportunities for expanded, attractive outdoor dining experiences as well as entertainment experiences. A revitalized downtown with small shops and dining. Art center with visual and performing arts. And that Lauren would include your theater concept here. Uh, public gathering play areas for residents. Centers linked by trolley or people mover. So you wouldn't have to use your car.
Is thirteen and sixteen essentially the same though?
Very similar.
Which is better, sixteen?
Sixteen is better.
Sixteen.
Thirteen now.
Well, combine thirteen with sixteen.
Yeah.
That this, these become destinations for guests and tourists. And a vibrant casino area with live entertainment venues and a resort hotel.
How many have you given us?
Do we need to add any?
No, how many can we? Um, I, I would like a cultural center.
A cultural center?
I mean, maybe that can go into the art center. It needs to be arts and also cultural.
Alright, why don't we, you want to keep with that and cultural to number 11?
Yes.
Done? And the point on those, it ought to be not only visual art, but performing and live art.
Yes.
Performing arts.
Performing arts, correct.
Any others we need to add here? Lauren, any others for you?
No.
Give me the eight out of the fifteen that are remaining. And vote for, uh, sixteen. Don't vote for thirteen.
I'm ready. You want to hear that?
Yeah, we've, uh, combined those in sixteen. It's wording is better than thirteen. Yep, I'm ready.
I have three.
Three.
Five.
Five.
Six.
What, eight?
Six.
Six.
Nine.
Nine.
Ten.
Ten.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
And sixteen.
And sixteen. Got it.
I have nine.
Yep.
One.
Seven. What?
One.
Did you all understand which?
We didn't hear you.
One.
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 Got it.
Two.
Two.
Six.
Six.
Seven.
Seven.
Eight.
Eight.
Nine.
Nine.
Ten.
Ten.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Thank you.
I just heard something coming there in here.
It, it's the F O.
I hear over there first.
How many are we choosing?
Eight.
Does anybody have any add-in, motion, I don't know. Why?
I might have in my truck.
Why?
No, no. Thank you. No pushing drugs, I'm telling you.
That's wrong with.
OTP, OTP, sorry.
Seven or eight, what do we pick?
Eight.
I'm ready.
Fire away Marco.
Two, three.
Two, three.
Seven, eight, I mean, seven, nine, ten.
Seven, nine, ten.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Or was it eighteen rather than fifty? It's eighteen because you changed it, right?
We don't have an eighteen.
I mean, I'm sorry, sixteen. I'm sorry, I got written down.
We had a thirteen into sixteen.
Sixteen, fifteen.
Fifteen.
How many is that? I got confused. I took the numbers down.
You have one more.
I was afraid of that. Well, you know what? I'm gonna do something crazy here. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to, uh, something, uh, they probably need to work on a little bit around our, our, on-site city. Maybe it's a convenient access to park. I'll go number eight.
Number eight.
The only thing we have is a parking garage in On Street Park and we need to work on that.
I'm ready.
Fire away Joyce.
One.
One.
Three.
Three.
Five.
Five.
Seven.
Seven.
Nine.
Nine.
Ten.
Ten.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
I'm almost there, not yet.
Let me just check. You see if I got anything?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Fire away.
Uh, three.
Three.
Six.
Six.
Eight.
Eight.
Nine.
Nine.
Ten.
Ten.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Boy, this is, your vision is getting very clear because most of them are getting four or five out of it, so it's not. They are, for this, uh, the vibrant centers are three, which is the. Three, it's a small-scale retail, probably would, uh, that would include restaurants as well, right?
Yeah.
And six, walkable and pedestrian-friendly. Seven, all family generations feeling welcome. Uh, eight is convenient access and parking. Nine is outdoor dining. Ten is a revitalized downtown with small shops and outdoor dining. Number eleven is arts and cultural center with visual and performing arts. And sixteen, the alternative to move through either a trolley or a people mover. That make sense?
Yep.
And those are really staying out. Going to great neighborhoods. Number, you've talked about them.
Wait a second, so the mic will have to be back to this chart for a second.
Thanks.
Take a two-minute break over.
Thirty more seconds.
Alright.
Come in.
Are you timing?
Well, no, I saw him walking in.
Oh, there you go.
Oh.
I got one, I don't have a chair.
That's not.
Thank you. Field camera. The small camera took the two. Yeah, that's not what they're gonna say.
Huh?
That's not what they're gonna say. Thank you.
Keep going, we're at page fifteen, great neighborhoods. Choice of quality housing. A little redundant here. Quality housing cho- choices for families and individuals. Two is high perfe- uh, percentage of single-family homeownership. Sense of neighborhood integrity and pride. Stable and increasing single-family home values. Fifteen years' access to green spaces. Older, smaller homes, modernized, upgraded, or replaced. Well-designed, well-maintained yards and landscaping. Well-maintained neighborhood infrastructure, that's streets and sidewalks. Quiet neighborhoods. Neighbors knowing and helping neighbors. Homes and buildings complying with city codes. Convenient mobility within Dania Beach with a choice of mobility options. Convenient access to Broward County and South Florida destinations. Several you talked about your location as an asset, you can go north or south. Uh, neighborhoods, revitalized neighborhoods without gentrification. Low income housing options for residents. Community connected through a trolley system and people mover that could be linked with twelve.
Yeah.
You okay with that, linking those two? Those are two separate comments.
Which one are we cutting out?
Twelve and sixteen will be incorporated. Seventeen is residents involved and contributing to their neighborhoods, including HOAs.
Twelve and sixteen are combined?
Yes, to twelve.
Which way you gonna go, Marla?
To twelve.
Changing to twelve, here with a sixteen.
So, scratch sixteen and we incorporate that as in twelve.
And we get eight.
And we have to decide. Now, do you have one to add or change?
Yeah, the choice of quality. The choice of quality housing.
Yeah.
For families and individuals. Can we make sure that that includes a variety? I wanna make sure that the variety also is quality.
Variety of type, right?
Excuse me?
Variety of type of house.
Yes.
Okay, added the variety to number one.
Uh, uh, maybe the sa- you can scratch the second choices and put variety, choice of quality housing varieties for families and individuals?
Which word is it?
Alright.
Must have read what I wrote.
Oh. How many are we picking?
Any others you would add or change here? Eight.
Ready?
Yep.
One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Three.
Eight.
Eight.
Ten.
Ten.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
And fifteen.
And fifteen. Joyce?
Well, I'm ready to.
Fire away.
I was calling rounds, but it's okay, I'm ready. One.
One.
Three.
Three.
Seven.
Seven.
Ten.
Ten.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, one.
One.
Four.
Four.
Five.
Five.
Eight.
Eight.
Ten.
Ten.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Seventeen.
And seventeen.
I'm pretty much ready.
Fire away, Marco.
One.
One.
Uh. Two.
Two.
Three.
Three.
Seven.
Seven.
Eight.
Seven, eight.
Ten.
Ten.
Eleven and fourteen.
Eleven and fourteen. Lauren, you got yours?
Yes. Thirteen.
Did you hear it?
Can't hear it all.
Thirteen?
No, we can't hear you.
Thirteen?
Thirteen.
Twelve?
What?
Twelve?
Twelve.
Nine?
Nine.
Six?
What was that one?
Six.
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 Five?
Five.
Four?
Four.
Three?
Three. I need a tiebreaker. I, would you write down the following numbers on the, on a, on your page there? That is for two, four, five, seven, eleven, thirteen, and fifteen. No, we're gonna get more than one. Give me the three out, so it's two, four, five, seven, eleven, thirteen, and fifteen. Out of those, give me the three most important for you. These all tie, this first time we've had that. The ones that have already made it, if you wanna know what they are, cause they could influence your choices. The ones that got a clear majority are, one, the variety and quality of housing choices. Three, sense of neighborhood integrity and pride. Number eight, neighborhood infrastructure. Not, ten is neighbors knowing neighbors. And fourteen, revitalized neighborhoods without gentrification. Those six all made it. I'm looking for, giving me the, give you three out of the seven that remain.
I thought two, I thought number two had three votes.
No, it only had two.
I know, I know Tamara and I were there, I thought Lauren could sit two.
Lyle, can you say one more time what the tiebreakers are?
Yes, number two, number four, number five, number seven, number eleven, number thirteen, and fifteen. And give me the three out of those. Two?
Yes. Fifteen.
Fifteen, and? Eleven, got it. Thank you.
Four.
Four.
Yes, four, seven.
Eleven.
Eleven.
And eleven.
Alright.
Laurie?
Uh, four, five.
Four.
Yes, five.
Five.
And eleven.
And eleven.
Okay, I'll give mine.
Fire it out of there, Marco.
Two, four, and eleven.
Two, four, and eleven.
Alright. Four, seven, and fifteen.
Four, seven, and fifteen. Hey, thank you. Add number four, stable and increasing single-family home values. And number eleven, buildings and homes complying with codes. The ones that you already had identified are one, three, eight, ten, and, uh, fourteen. Go to the thriving business community and local economy. Uh, one, and these, we're getting there, it's up there on page seventeen and eighteen. Uh, home headquarters for major corporation in fifteen years, that could be corporation or corporations. Class A offices, fully occupied in office buildings and mixed-use developments. Strong retail in mixed-use developments and activity centers. This one is what you talked about, you're a destination for tourists. There are a lot of elements, and that would be having an attraction and an active marketing program for the city. And that's for international, uh, guests here as well. And that there's multiple reasons to come here, but you're a destination. Uh, five is a variety of types of business activities. Six is entertainment and experience-based businesses for residents and our guests to enjoy. Ability for residents to work near home, more personal and family time for your residents. Workforce prepared for twenty-first century jobs, y'all talked about job development, that's, uh, working to make sure those job opportunities are there, but also that your residents are trained. Strong marine-related businesses with quality job opportunities. A successful casino with major entertainment value contributing to your community. Number eleven, major hotel and restaurants and conference facility. Innovation center for entrepreneurs spinning off new businesses here. South Florida's destination for technology businesses. Aircraft maintenance businesses serving the airport. The airport naming would be included as part of that destination one earlier. Uh, regional offices for financial services. Specialty light manufacturing. Example that was given to me was pacemakers. Pharmaceutical and life screening businesses. Uh, and number eighteen could be pulled in to number nine, you okay with that? There were two individual comments, so eighteen will be combined with nine. Uh, reputation as a business-friendly city government, both in terms of our regulations and processes. What other things do we need to add or change here? Joyce?
I would, uh, add a thriving chamber of commerce for networking businesses.
Would you say a successful chamber of commerce?
Yeah, a thriving chamber of commerce.
Add that as number twelve, uh, twenty? Successful chamber of commerce is what I heard. Uh, encouraging the networking of our businesses. Is that right, Joyce?
That's correct.
Does that include small businesses?
Of course.
Wow.
Yes.
Can we make sure that includes small businesses?
Sure. Yeah, most of the cities I worked with, the small businesses really become the heart of that chamber. That's where the workforce comes, folks that put the, roll up their sleeves and do a lot of that work. We added that as number twenty, right?
Yes.
Any others? The point is a successful chamber of commerce that, that, uh, facilitates networking of businesses, including small businesses. Any others you would add? Or change? Because of the number here, I'm gonna give you nine.
I'm ready.
You ready to go, Marco?
Yes, sir.
Well, you're ready, fire away.
One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Seven.
Seven.
Nine or eighteen?
Nine.
Ten?
Eighteen, ten.
Nineteen?
Nineteen.
And twenty.
Okay? Fire away. One.
Sorry, one. Then I have three through eight.
Three, four. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And then I have twelve and twenty.
And twenty. Lauren? Lauren, you ready?
Yes. Yes. Can you hear me? What about now?
Good.
Yeah, okay. Um, three.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Five.
Five.
Six.
Six.
Eight.
Eight.
Nine.
Nine.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Thirteen and twenty.
What was before twenty?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Okay, I'm ready.
Joyce?
One.
One.
Three.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Six.
Six.
Eight.
Eight.
Ten.
Ten.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Twenty.
And twenty.
How many? Are we at nine?
Nine.
Okay. Uh, one.
One.
Three.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Eight.
Eight.
Nine.
Nine.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Twenty.
Twenty. This is real clear. What you want for your strong local economy is, in fif- in fifteen years, home headquarters for major corporations. One. Three, strong retail economy. Four is a destination of national and international tourists that is marketing. That includes the airport, includes, um, an attraction. Six is entertainment and experience-based, uh, businesses. Number eight, the workforce developed for that, those job opportunities. Nine, strong marine industry. Twelve is an innovation center spinning off local new businesses. Thirteen is a destination for technology. And twenty, a strong relationship and successful chamber of commerce networking with, uh, businesses, particularly small businesses.
Did you say twelve?
Yeah.
Yes.
Twelve, thirteen, twenty.
Twelve, thirteen, and twenty.
I must have missed something on twelve.
Comments there?
I only had two people on that, but I, I could miss it.
Going to eight. Parks and leisure opportunities for all. And after this one, we'll take a break.
Add something, uh, for our parks, you know, something that relates to, you know, we wanna have chess in the parks. We wanna have STEM, um, opportunities in the parks, not just sports.
What would you change here, Lauren?
Uh, I guess STEM, STEM opportunities for parks and recreation programs. People, not everyone wants to do sports. They wanna do debate. They wanna do chess. They wanna do, you know.
Would it include a number four diverse recreational programmings?
I don't, uh, we've had specific requests, specific to STEM activities. I mean, we talked about this before.
Not just STEM though, I mean, there's also, there's other types of.
I said debate, theater, uh, chess are, like, they wanted more programs beyond just sport. So I don't know how to word that.
Alright, uh, if it's not captured in diverse recreation programs, let's add it as number fifteen. STEM recreation programs.
Could we include in that though, not just STEM, but other types of, um, learning opportunities?
Educational.
Educational learning opportunities.
That can go on to the eleven?
We have specialty recreational programs.
I tried, well, I tried both of those, so, uh, we're gonna, she wanted to list it separate, so we'll list it as fifteen. STEM and other educational recreation programs. That capture yours, Lauren?
Yes.
That is number fifteen. So, um, they are, potential here are well-designed, well-maintained parks with a variety of, of venues and amenities. Number two is, um, first-class, multi-use indoor facility for use by the community and our residents. Number three is recreation and leisure opportunities for all generations. Leisure needs. Five is family-friendly, community events and festivals. Number six is strong partnerships for sports. Uh, seven is youth sports for recreation and travel. Senior services and activities responsive to various age seniors. There is a real difference between those over eighty and those that are the baby boomers. The baby boomers are saying, I screwed up my life, now I wanna get healthy. They have very different outlets. Uh, nine is programs and activities that support personal health and wellness. Uh, ten is learning opportunities for personal growth and development. Eleven is specialty programs and classes responsive to your needs. Linear parks along your corridors, and several of you talked about those as really opportunities. Wave component for city parks.
What does that mean?
I think I might know what that was.
What?
Project goes in, there's a, there was a place there on the, between buildings. That would happen, they have a, kind of, they wanted to put a park in there. Is that anything with it?
No, they said that that's gonna be their park. I don't, I don't know why that would be.
I, I didn't know, I mean, when it said wave, I just kinda came to get that. Scratch thirteen?
Scratch thirteen, fourteen's already included under another one. Recreational programs.
Sort of in there that has us working with the local schools?
Sure. You wanna add that as fifteen?
Local schools for like, um, or other programs that maybe the schools aren't teaching, that maybe we can have something done in our, we were just talking about resume writing and things like that, that stuff that gives me.
So I put a partnership with schools for recreation and educational programs. Does that capture Lauren?
I think so, yes.
What number's that gonna be?
Number sixteen. At number seventeen, I would suggest capturing one that, uh, couple of them are, is a theater with performing arts. Seventeen could be that, uh, real theater. Any others we need to add? Here that are most important for you as it relates to leisure opportunities. Fire away.
One, two, three?
One, two, three.
Five, six, seven, eight?
Five, six, seven.
And eight?
Fifteen. And sixteen?
How many was it, Lyle?
Pardon me?
It's eight of them?
Eight.
Eight.
Okay, I have my eight. One, two.
One, two.
Four, five.
Four, five.
Nine, ten.
Nine, ten.
Eleven, fifteen.
Eleven and fifteen. Thank you.
Is that a moan I heard over there?
You can have fun while we do these things. You got yours, Joyce?
I gotta take one off.
I have mine.
Fire away, Lauren.
One, two, three.
One, two.
Three.
Three.
Five.
Five.
Seven.
Seven.
Nine.
Nine.
Ten.
Ten.
Sixteen.
And sixteen, right?
Yep.
Alright.
Yes, Joyce?
Alright. One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Three.
Five.
Five.
Eight.
Eight.
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Give me one more, please. Give me a ninth choice. There's only four came out that time, so give me a ninth choice.
What was that?
Give me a ninth choice.
Cameron hasn't finished yet.
For all of us?
Everybody gets one more choice.
Cameron didn't finish yet.
Cameron, did I not get yours?
I didn't get any of them.
Alright, so.
Wait, not me?
Then you don't get a ninth.
Nine?
Eight.
Eight.
It's that I didn't have hers, I needed.
I have one, two, three.
One, two, three.
Six, obviously.
Six.
Six and seven can't go together?
Six and seven.
That, well, it's, I guess.
They don't go together, I mean, I think they, um, the youth thing, and that's recreation and travel. Okay. And six. Um, fifteen and eleven. I, I gave, excuse me. I gave you eight. How many do you want? Okay. Do you, did you get them all?
Yeah, and I've got, as winners are, one, well-designed, well-maintained parks and amenities. Two is first-class indoor facility. Three is recreation, uh, activities and programs for all generations. Five, family-friendly, community events. Uh, seven is youth sports, both, uh, recreation and travel. Number fifteen is STEM and educational recreation programs. And fifteen is strong partnerships with the schools for recreation and education. Thank you. We will get this, you'll see this another one more time to do final edits, but today was aimed at giving that initial focus. Does that make sense, will you do that? Great, we wanna come back. Section eight, and we'll start on page four. So we'll take, wait, a five-minute break, okay? Did we do this whole book today? No. Can we get? I understand. That's why I was gonna give a super. Five minutes.
I mean, if I'm gonna be longer, I just gotta make some changes, that's all.
No, no, I, Mike. Uh, Marko, you gotta be quick. So this is your mission, the purpose and responsibilities.
Thank you, Rob.
There you go. And there's five principles, same concept. Let me go through them. The first thing, I asked you all what level of service you want. The thing is excellent. That was the one that common theme. What is excellent municipal services mean? Provide fair, equitable, and consistent services. Know best practices and apply them to city government. Know and use ongoing process improvement in every department. Have accredited departments meeting and exceeding national standards. A model for other city governments. Develop, use, and update an ongoing strategic planning process. Be prepared for, respond to, and recover from a disaster. Have a city workforce dedicated to public service and a commitment to serving your community. Developing and upgrade performance metrics to reduce cost of service, as well as enhance service. Develop a reputation and receive awards for organization and service excellence. Going to the next page. Is evaluate performance outcomes and use data to enhance services. Act in a professional manner. Provide services responsive to the community. Use state-of-the-art information technology. Take responsibility and be accountable for decisions, actions, and behavior. Have data-driven decisions. Work together as a city team that's from mayor and commission through our departments without department silos. Provide proactive communications. Provide services that add value to the community and our residents. And be agile, nimble, and adjusting to the dynamic world and local environment. Any questions, comments, or additions here? Give me the nine, nine here that are most important for you as it relates to excellent municipal services. Camera?
I wanna add something.
Okay.
I don't know if you said it...
I don't know if you said it or not, but ensuring that we are... How do I say this? Engaging more with the community, we have to find a...
That is an actual principle coming up. Partnership with the community is number five.
But when you say municipal services, being able to engage more with the community for the education and understanding how municipal...
That is actually a principle five.
This is principle one.
This is principle one. If you flip over to page twelve, it's saying that service needs to be done in partnership with the community. And there's a number of things and ways of involving and engaging our community. Because I heard that was one, if you're gonna do municipal services, we need to partner and engage our community.
Okay.
It's one of the five, it ought to be there. So give me the nine here, just as it relates to excellent municipal services. And again, there are other principles: financially responsible, environmentally sustainable, outstanding, customer service, and partnering with the community are the five that are there.
You ready?
Yep, fire away.
One.
One.
Six, seven, eight.
Six, seven, eight.
Thirteen, fourteen.
Thirteen, fourteen.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Thank you. Have we lost her?
No. Have we lost who?
Mine, oh, there she is.
No.
I have nine.
Nine, where are you, Lauren?
One, two.
One, two.
Five.
Five.
Twelve through seventeen.
Twelve what?
Twelve through seventeen.
So twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Yes.
Okay.
You said nine, right?
Yes.
I'm ready.
Fire away.
One, two.
One, two.
Five, six.
Five, six.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Okay.
Fire away, Joyce.
One.
One.
Five.
Five.
Seven.
Seven.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Nineteen.
You said nineteen as well?
Yes.
Nineteen.
You think that's ten?
Nineteen.
You tried.
I tried, I tried, I tried, alright.
No more.
Let's take a...
The last one.
Yeah.
Lauren, you got yours?
Lauren.
Mark, leave me?
I'm the only guy in here, okay? Yep.
I'm gonna go to Lauren or Lori. Alright, I got all but one.
I think I'm delicious.
What?
What do you got?
I don't know yet, I got one more to pick.
Take...
I said take one of hers.
Yeah.
Take one of mine.
I'll go ahead and pick that one. I'm always the last one, aren't I? Alright, I'm ready.
Fire away.
One, two.
One, two.
Three. I mean, sorry, one, two, five, six.
Five, six. Nine.
Eleven, twelve, fourteen.
Eleven, twelve, fourteen.
Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. The big winners here are: One, provide fair, equitable, and consistent service. Two, is know best practices and apply to your city government. Five, serve as a model for other city governments. Six, develop, use, and update ongoing strategic planning. Number twelve, act in a professional manner. Thirteen is provide services responsive to the community. Is state-of-the-art information technology. And taking responsibility and being accountable for decisions, actions, and behaviors. Number seventeen, working together as a city team. Eighteen is provide proactive communications with a variety of methods. And nineteen is have, provide services that add value to the community and our residents. Comments there? Fiscally responsible, financially responsible on pages seven and eight. The responsibilities of city government are to provide adequate resources to support defined city services and service levels. Deliver city services in the most cost-effective, efficient manner. Three, look for ways to reduce taxes and fees. Four, leverage city resources through grants, outside fundings, and what we talked about earlier, add and partnerships there. Because we've talked about that a number of times today. Partnering with others. Whether it be the schools, or chamber, or whatever. Does that make sense adding that? Providing competitive, market-based employee city compensation that is affordable for residents. Invest in the maintenance of city infrastructure. Develop and use infrastructure and facility master plans. Eight is develop and enhance financial planning and forecasting. Use debt to fund future capital projects. Maintain a high bond rating, A-plus or better. Moving to the next page. Is develop and update a capital and planning process or community investment program. A lot of the cities I work with, instead of calling a CIP a capital planning, it's community investment. It's easier to explain that to your residents because these are in projects that invest in your future. Just something for future considerations. Twelve is reduce the cost of city government. Thirteen is develop positive working relationship with the Broward County Schools. Funding for city, for school, facilities, and programs. That would be where the city actually puts funding into the schools here in your city. Evaluate, adjust, and eliminate city services to meet community and residents' needs. Develop partnerships to expand resources, scratch that, since we've incorporated that earlier. Have sufficient resources to respond to and recover from a disaster, like a hurricane. Identify cost-saving managers, measures, and have effective project management. Any additions, comments? Camera?
I have two comments. Can we not put six and five, six and five? Wait, I'm sorry, six and seven. Because if we're going to invest in infrastructure, we would need a master plan kind of to do it.
Yeah, six and seven together.
Or develop and fund the infrastructure.
Development and invest in... So, scratch six and number seven.
Because if you go to the example that you alluded to, when Paul Burke came as Public Works Director in Fort Lauderdale about five years ago, they have zero master plans.
I also want to...
And that was one of his goals.
I also wanna see if we can add something that says along the lines to evaluate our outsourcing.
Sure. Number twenty?
Sure, yeah, because I know that we have outsourcing for a reason, but you know, as we grow back to be a stronger Dania Beach, we can eliminate some of that.
How about we say evaluate and reduce?
That's fine.
And what?
Evaluate and reduce. Outsourcing.
So what I've got is evaluate and reduce outsourcing of city services, is that right?
Yes.
Good. Karen, do you have another one that you should do?
No, the other one was to put six and seven.
Okay, we got that by scratching six and incorporating that would invest. Any other changes here, or additions? Any others? Give me the nine here that are most important for you. Ready? You must have checked them off as we went along.
It's getting better.
Alright, what are they, Joyce?
Four.
Four.
Five.
Five.
Seven.
Seven.
Ten.
Ten.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Twenty.
And twenty. That's only eight I've got. Let me go, I got four, five, seven, ten.
That's eight.
Thirteen, fourteen.
Because I put them together, so... I put, because six and seven are together, that's what I did.
Okay, then you got one more.
Eighteen, I got.
What'd you say, add eighteen?
I have a question.
Sure.
When you say evaluate, adjust, and eliminate city services to community and residents' need, why would we eliminate city services to community and residents' need?
It's supposed to be to meet community, to meet residents.
Meet?
Yeah, to meet community and residents' needs.
Uh-huh.
Well, that checks. Because I wrote it in when he said it.
Okay, I'm ready.
Fire away.
Three.
Three.
Four, five. Three, four, five.
Five.
Seven.
Seven.
Ten.
Ten.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
And twenty.
Twenty. Thank you.
Thirteen what, and twenty?
Seventeen.
Thank you. And twenty.
Thirteen, seventeen, and twenty?
Yep.
Wait, I have fifteen on here.
Fifteen?
You had fifteen, too.
Thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, twenty.
That's what I've got.
Alright. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. You said nine, right?
Yep.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I think I can do mine.
You got yours, Lauren?
Yes.
Fire away.
Three.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Six.
Six. Six and seven are combined.
Yeah. Yeah. Ten.
Ten.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
That one was taken.
Sixteen, sixteen through twenty.
Four.
Sixteen through twenty.
There is no sixteen.
Sixteen was combined with four.
Okay. So seventeen?
Nineteen and twenty.
Right.
Do you need one more?
And you have one more choice.
Wait, let me read back. I have three, four, six, ten... Wait, let me read back. I have three, four, six, ten. And then sixteen through twenty, and you said one of them was combined, so I have one more?
Yes.
Five.
Thank you, five.
Joyce came with mine, but mine.
Can't stand if you call this a layer, 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 layer.
Can I exchange one?
Sure.
I want to take off eighteen, add three.
So add three and take off eighteen, right? Good.
Alright, I have nine.
Fire away, Lori.
Two, three.
Two, three.
Four.
Four.
Ten.
Ten.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Nineteen and twenty.
Nineteen and twenty. Marco, you got yours?
I got one, one or two, I'm close, I got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I'm just supposed to have nine?
Yes.
I need one more, just give me one second, I'll get a picture. Okay. Okay. I got, I think, oh, I got, I'm sorry, I already had that one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I got, I think I got nine. One.
One.
Three.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Five.
Five.
Seven.
Seven.
Eight.
Eight.
Nine.
Nine.
Ten.
Ten.
And fifteen.
Alright, I need a tiebreaker between thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen. Thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen.
Would you?
Two. Thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen.
Thirteen and fifteen for me.
What is it?
Thirteen and fifteen.
Thirteen, fifteen, thank you.
Eighteen, nineteen for me.
Eighteen, nineteen, thank you.
Thirteen, seventeen.
Thirteen and what?
Were we, was that one of them seventeen?
No.
Thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen.
I'll do fifteen and eighteen.
Seventeen and eighteen. And you have one more, Joyce, right?
Yes. Thirteen and fifteen.
What is it?
Thirteen, fif-
Thirteen, fifteen.
Lauren?
Eighteen and nineteen.
What is it?
Eighteen and nineteen.
Eighteen and nineteen?
Yeah.
The big winners are, three. Four, so it's looking for ways to reduce taxes and fees, four is leveraging resources, five is competitive, market-based, uh, compensation that is affordable. Seven is develop and invest in the city infrastructure. Uh, ten is maintain a high bond rating. Uh, number fifteen is evaluate, adjusting, eliminating, uh, services. Uh, number seventeen is have sufficient resources to respond to and recover from a disaster. Uh, eighteen is identify cost-saving measures, and number twenty, evaluate and reduce outsourcing of city services. Environmentally responsible, that was, uh, brought up this morning. Uh, and what does this mean? Effective stormwater management and flood control. Protect our beach and dunes. Protect the quality of our waterways. Uh, plan and respond to climate change, changes in climate and king tides. Uh, provide neighborhoods, uh, protect neighborhoods from flooding. Conserve the use of water, have a safe and secure water supply for the future. Design future developments to incorporate environmental sustainable concepts. Expand the city's use of renewable energy resources. Support the use of electric vehicles, personal, business, and public transit. Number eleven is design and maintain sustainable city buildings and facilities. Have an office in the city for sustainability and resiliency, and have flex work hours and teleworking for city employees.
I would like to add something. Creation of a climate master plan, um, or action plan, whichever you want to call it. All, most of the coastal cities have this, and really everything else, um, a working one. And all these other things will fall, would fall under that, and it would be piecemealing these things until you have your, your master plan in place as to how you are going to do things and how you are going to measure the success. So, I find it to be necessary.
Add as number fourteen, develop a workable climate action plan. Does that capture it, Lauren?
That's a plan.
Ma- a master plan.
That should be consistent with all of our other plans and make it a master plan.
But I also heard action plan too, is that right? Master and action plan?
Yeah. Yeah.
That is fourteen.
Develop a-
A workable climate change master slash action plan. Any others? Lori?
Um, can we do something about educating the community on, um, on, uh, reducing the use of single-use plastics?
So educate the community.
Do we want to umbrella that under environmental education for, for residents? Because I think there's a couple of different educational programs that we could do, um, that would do that. I think that's a great one though, but, or do you want to keep it specifically that, Lori?
I was just going to say, and other environmentally friendly, um.
But that's fifteen, is that that educational program?
Right.
Okay.
But community engagement, because I don't think it's, you know.
So educate and engage the community on environmental sustainability.
What number is that?
We're adding-
Number fifteen.
I'm sorry, I missed fourteen.
Fourteen is a workable climate change master and action plan.
The, the climate change master plan, would that include things with regard to sea level rise?
Yes, absolutely.
Doesn't it something to do with number four though, right?
Sort of.
No, because that's just talking about climate and king tide. A comprehensive master plan, as you'll find in Dagan Broward, encompasses all the things that you're seeing here for one through thirteen and beyond that.
So then can we call it, uh, like, I know you're saying like a climate master plan and action plan, but how about, um, climate and, and sea level rise, or including sea level rise issues?
They usually call it a climate resilience plan, because that's the latest buzzword. Whatever buzzword you want to use is fine, but you know, climate change, climate resiliency, it's anything that's going to encompass everything we're referring to the environment, the beach, um, sea level rise, king tide, et cetera.
Okay. Any others you would add, Joyce, you and your end.
It went along with Lori's, because I was just going to say, uh, community engagement.
Which we've got, right now? It's fifteen?
Yep.
Any others?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still confused, did we do anything with fourteen, is it separate than, than it is with, uh, four, or are we combining those?
No, it's, it's a separate.
Separate?
It's separate.
This, uh, fourteen is develop a workable climate change resiliency, or resiliency, because that's a, sort of a term these days. A master and action plan including sea level rise. Uh, that's more comprehensive than the earlier one. Number fifteen is educate and engage the community on issues of environmental sustainability and resilience. Does that capture it?
Yeah, that works.
Any others? Give me the eight here that are most important for you. And this is looking at the purpose and mission of city government, the eight. My neck needed a break.
I have one.
One.
Two.
Two.
Four and five.
Four and five.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight.
And fourteen, fifteen.
Fourteen, fifteen. Got it.
I have mine as well.
Fire away.
One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Five.
Five.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight.
Eleven and twelve.
Eleven, twelve.
And fourteen.
And fourteen.
Okay.
Fire away.
One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Five.
Five.
Eight.
Eight.
Nine.
Nine.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Fourteen and fifteen.
Fourteen and fifteen.
Alright, good one.
Fire away, Lori.
One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Four.
Four.
Five.
Five.
Eight.
Eight.
Nine.
Nine.
Fourteen and fifteen.
Fourteen and fifteen, got it.
Eight.
Eight, yes.
One, two, three, four, five.
One, two, three, four, five.
Seven, eleven, and fourteen.
Seven, eleven, and fourteen. Big winners here are, one, effective stormwater and flood control. Two is protecting your beach and dunes. The one and two. Four is respond to changes in climate and king tides. Five is protect neighborhoods from flooding. Seven is have a safe, secure water supply for the future. Eight is develop, design future developments to import, incorporate environmental sustainability concepts. Number eleven is design and maintain sustainable city buildings. Fourteen is develop a workable climate change resiliency master and action plan. And number fifteen is educate and engage community on environmental sustainability and resilience.
That's nine if you do that one.
What?
That was nine if you did that one.
Yep. Sometimes we've had less or more.
Oh, okay, I thought we, I thought we voted eight times, I'm sorry.
Definitely. Going to outstanding customer service. We've got two more to do. Uh, what does this mean to you? Demonstrate compassion for customers, several of you brought that up to me and used that word, compassion. Listen to and strive to understand our customers' concerns, needs, and issues. Look for ways to say yes. What? Uh, there could be different ways of, uh, defining that, but I heard those as two separate things.
Okay.
If you must say no, take time to explain your decisions and actions to the customer. Be nice and attentive. Demonstrate sys- uh, develop systems for measuring customer satisfaction level and feedback on customer service. Provide customer-friendly, ADA-accessible buildings and workspaces. Present a professional image, and that would be personally out, if you are out in the field representing the city, but also in your workplace. Strive to exceed your customers' expectations. Uh, take pride in serving the community. Going to the next page, provide a twenty-four hour response to any inquiry. Act with a sense of urgency. Personalize the city services for your customer. Use technology to better serve our customers. Strive to, that's a, uh, repeat, fifteen is a repeat, so scratch it.
Three, nine.
Uh, scratch fifteen and keep the other. Meet angry customers in person and their location. What?
So that's a safety issue.
Or scratch that.
Uh, oh, that one actually was added by your staff. And they gave me examples where when somebody was complaining, they went out and shocked the hell out of them.
Well, maybe not angry, maybe just unsatisfied?
Well, that could be a much broader category.
Yeah, I mean, if someone is angry, I'm not going to their house.
Really, really PO.
The ones that are really.
And so they could, and they gave me real-life examples where they knocked-
I could give you a three right now.
Metamorphosis, what was that, Lori?
I could give you a three right now.
Uh, where they went and knocked on the door, went out in the side, and they were.
Well, yeah, that happens, but again, um, I think we open ourselves up to some safety issues when you look at how people are conducting themselves nowadays.
We talked about the meaning of certainly.
Yeah, you just have to protect your employees.
But I think we should probably take it more angry, maybe dissatisfied, or, or concerned residents.
The problem is though, if you do that, then you're really opening that up, that, that becomes a really broad category, because you get people that are dissatisfied, but they're not really angry.
Yeah, but we're, we're rewarding angry people by showing up in their home.
It's true.
Like someone's not going to call me and curse me out, and I'm going to go to their house.
Satisfied those people, and you show up, and you know, sometimes then that, that stops them in their shot.
Yes.
You have those twenty percent who complain no matter what you're going to do. You show up to them, they're like, oh, you know what I mean?
That's our reaction, Joyce.
Yeah, they, they do.
So what?
But my, my concern was they're dissatisfied, and then you're going to end up having people having to literally go out to-
Maybe concerned, maybe concerned.
You know.
Because you know what we've done, we've met somebody, they've talked to us about a swell, then we got, we got to see the swell in person, or the street in person. So I think maybe concerned.
I would, I would rather concern.
Because it's not necessarily, if, if the ones that, the examples, they were upset, the individual was upset. Maybe not angry.
Yeah, I'm not here for angry.
Angry's gone, I've already toasted that one. Now it is gone. We'll figure out a word on that.
Is sixteen gone, or is the word angry gone?
What was that?
Is sixteen gone, or is the word angry gone?
The word angry is gone out of sixteen.
What about disgruntled?
No. Those are the people that come and shoot up the workplace.
Camera change.
I don't want to have a standard of, of allowing people to come in and be disrespectful and, and curse out our staff, and say, oh, okay, we're going to meet you at your house after you cursed our staff out.
But Mayor, isn't there a line that can be discerned with, with- But Mayor, isn't there a line that can be discerned with, with common sense of the individual? Between what is, um, it's unhappy customer and a, a violent or as you're describing, an abusive customer? Surely are, one of our public services people, if they were on the phone and felt uncomfortable with the customer, wouldn't go over there if they thought they were going to get, you know, juke in the eye.
I think, if, if, let's put place, for a placeholder, put dissatisfied.
Yeah, dissatisfied or concerned.
Right now.
Dissatisfied slash concerned.
Because, uh, there are, I'm reminded of a, next week at this time I'll be with Kissimmee and they had a very upset individual. So, police officer, he was a field training officer and the officer showed up at the house. This was two years ago, it may have, it made national news. It was set up for an assassination of two police officers.
I'm just saying.
The guy was sitting up on the second floor with a high-powered rifle.
Wow.
Uh, and it was a diverse, it was, uh, it was, one officer was Hispanic, the other was African-American and they both died. And it was, the City Managers Association actually did something for those employees, but they, one unfortunately lived for four days and then passed away.
That's crazy.
So let's just leave dissatisfied as a placeholder there, but it's, it's not just being mildly dissatisfied. Point is reaching out to that customer.
I get that.
Anticipate the needs of our customer and put your name on the service.
What do you mean?
Um, I am wild and I put the name on my service where if you go to some cities, they don't, they will not have their name there.
We have a department, we have a department.
You mean like these kinds of searches where they have their name badges on there?
Just that, no, you put your name on the service, while I was providing the service, I am your, I'm going out to deal with a, a, a problem. I am so-and-so from the city.
So personalizing that interaction.
That is, yeah, putting your name, it was, this was a, a comment made by one of the five of you. That whoever the city employee is, they ought to be able to put their name and be identified in that service.
I don't know.
Not all of these are gonna make it votes, just like the others. Any additions here? Give me the eight out of here that are most important. You have another one?
De-escalation training. We have public services, parks and recreation, our community development department that, that interfaces with our public daily.
Well, I think the key would be that, with the mission is to de-escalate conflict with customers.
Sure.
Add that as number eighteen.
Well, can we put in nineteen?
Nineteen. Can we scratch fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
I'm confused again.
Alright, so on sixteen, we scratched angry and put dissatisfied as a placeholder.
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Oh, now I don't want to confuse, I almost stepped ahead of you.
Alright, fifteen we've scratched, sixteen is dissatisfied and we added nineteen, de-escalate conflicts with our customers.
Via training?
Well, that's how you do it. This is the mission.
Invest in training.
Any others? Give me the eight here that are most important for you.
I'm ready.
Fire away.
Uh, one, two.
One, two.
Five.
Five.
Seven.
Seven.
Ten.
Ten.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
And eighteen.
And eighteen.
I'm ready.
Fire away.
One and two.
One, two.
Seven.
Seven.
Ten.
Ten.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
And nineteen.
And nineteen. Lauren, you got yours?
Yes, four.
Four.
Seven.
Seven.
Eight.
What's that you said?
Eight.
Eight?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Sixteen.
What team?
Sixteen, one, six. And eighteen.
Eighteen.
Can I change one of mine?
Sure.
I wanna take seventeen.
Yep.
And put it on eighteen because now that I'm thinking about it, we have a senior community. That if you get an email or notice that someone's coming out to your house with all of the fraudulent things that happen now, it'll be nice to know. Jake is coming here and if Paul shows up, you know, they'll know, no, you're not Jake.
And, and example, number of cities I worked with not only will say, but show a picture of the individual.
Yeah, I think, I, I take.
That's better to show on.
So that they would know who is actually not the, just the name.
Correct.
But here's my mug.
Yes, I just thought about it differently.
No, but those are, but same purpose of, of making it again, easy and convenient for that customer and safe.
Correct.
I got mine.
Fire away.
Okay, two.
Two.
Seven.
Seven.
Eight.
Eight.
Ten.
Ten.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Alright.
Alright.
One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Seven.
Seven.
Eight.
Eight.
Nine.
Nine.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Big winners are, one, demonstrate compassion. Two is listen and strive to understand. Seven is customer-friendly ADA accessible. Eight, a professional image both in terms of person and workplace. Ten, taking pride in serving your Dana Beach, uh, community. Eleven is twenty-four response to an inquiry. Twelve, act with a sense of urgency. Fourteen is use technology to better serve and number eighteen is putting your name on the service. Going to, the last one is partnership with the community. Is have residents trusting city government. Govern in a civil and respectful manner. Work as a city team. Provide a variety of methods for gathering information and input from residents. Communicate in an open, transparent and timely manner. Involve residents in the governance process, boards, commissions, task force committees. Conduct regular town hall meetings. Have proactive communication mechanism using a variety of platforms and processes. Recognize volunteers for their time and contribution. Strong partnerships with service clubs, community organizations and other institutions. Develop and regularly update the city's website and app. Uh, develop an effective emergency communication system. Listen to the input and feedback from the community. Pursue mutual benefits with partners. Develop work relations with partners based upon mutual trust and respect. You might wanna combine fourteen and fifteen, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And sixteen as well. And the last one is work with HOAs and neighborhood associations. What other things would you add here? Cameron?
Um, listen to the input and feedback from the community. Can we add an action other than that? Because a lot of times our community comes in droves and they tell us how they feel and, and you know, I'm speaking years ago, nothing current. And, um, we, we hear them, but that's about it.
So we need to say and take follow-up actions?
I don't know, but if you're gonna ask the community to be engaged in telling you what they want and how they feel. And then you just do what, no, I'm talking about decision-making.
Implement it, yeah, adapt upon.
And act, listen and act. I mean, it's not good enough to just listen if you're not gonna really.
Take action, does that get it?
I guess.
Yeah.
I don't know the word.
Any other changes you would have? Anyone to add?
So my fourteen, fifteen and sixteen is one?
Yeah.
Cause they're all working with partners and it's saying mutual trust, mutual benefit and achieve those common goals. Any others? Is your hand up Joyce, are you okay?
I think I'm done. If we have eight, no, I'm done.
You already got eight?
Yeah.
Eight.
Alright, one, five.
One, five.
Six.
Six.
Seven.
Seven.
Ten.
Ten.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Fourteen.
Yep. Thank you.
I have mine.
Fire.
One, two, three?
One, two, three.
Um, five through eight, no, that's last, five and six?
Five, six.
Eight.
Eight.
Um, thirteen.
Thirteen.
And.
Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Got it.
Lauren, you ready?
Yes ma'am, one and two?
One, what?
One, two.
Two.
Four.
Four.
Five.
Five.
Seven.
Seven.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Thirteen and fourteen.
Thirteen and fourteen, thank you.
I'm ready.
Fire away Marco.
One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Three.
Five.
Five.
Six.
Six.
Nine.
Nine.
Ten.
Ten.
And sixteen? Fifteen, fourteen, whatever it is.
Yep, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, working with partners.
Okay.
Lauren?
Um, Laurie, um, one.
One.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Three.
Five.
Five.
Eight.
Eight.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Fourteen.
Big winners are, one, uh, trusted, having residents trust city government. Two is govern in a civil and respectful manner. Three is work as a city team. Five is communicate in an open, transparent and timely manner. Uh, six is involve residents. Uh, eleven is develop and regularly update the city website and app. Uh, thirteen is listen to, uh, input and feedback from the community and take appropriate action. And work with partners, develop working relationship with partners based upon mutual trust, mutual benefit to achieve common goals. Okay? Uh, it is around four, is that right, my time?
Yeah.
Outstanding, great.
Uh, you guys did it. This week I'll get back to you a summary of what we've done here today, a draft. Uh, and you can fire back to me any edits that you wanna see on that. Uh, it'll be the vision and mission. You, this is hard work today. The next time we get together, it will be taking the plan. So, uh, I'm gonna do a revised section ten, which is the plan to incorporate what we just talked about. And add some additional things. I'll get a draft to you as well and you can send back any additions to expedite our time. And with that, we're supposed to quit right at four.
Great job.
Anyway. Some good input and I think we made some good headlines, so.
Thank you.
It was nice seeing you in person. Uh, you guys worked hard. Uh, my funds are not used to sitting in these chairs. I'm used to my office chair, so. Any other final comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you all. You have a nice rest of the weekend and, uh, I'll talk to you on Monday.
Thank you. Anybody want some, man, here?
Yes.
I have all of them. I ate three this morning, I think I'm, this is pretty sweet.
Yep.
Yeah, me too. Got some dessert.
That was your dessert?
I'm not looking at those.
After.
Cause once I start, I can't. I'll eat little, a whole lot of little ones?